Call the work session and joint meeting of the Portsmouth City Council and the Economic Development Authority to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Sumis?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mero.
Here.
Mr. Hines, would you want to call yours?
I will do so. Mr. Moore, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Mr. Hines?
Present.
Ms. Jiggetts?
Present.
Mr. Kelly?
Present.
Ms. Link?
Present.
Ms. Revel?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody, and thank you to the members of the EDA for this joint meeting. And it's like a retreat. And I thank everybody for giving up a Saturday to do this important work. We have coffee and juice and pastries in the kitchen. Coffee's over here. So help yourself. And this morning Suzanne Perrier, who's no stranger to either the EDA or to the city, will help us so that we can quickly, not quickly, get through our work today in a good fashion. The first, Dr. Pat?
I just said to Mr., I don't see the agenda in front of the agenda. And I guess it's, you all have it on your, on your...
Devices.
On your devices. All right. With that said, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we're indeed pleased that both the council and the EDA can meet this morning. We have a full agenda that a team within the city has put together, and we look forward to working through it and accomplishing our goals.
Well, the first item is that we need a closed meeting. This is a joint closed meeting of both the City Council and the EDA. Is there a motion to go into closed?
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.237-711A6 for the purpose of discussing the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city specifically regarding the commons at Portsmouth Center.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Sumis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding, and I say this to our visitors, the EDA needs to consider a motion to. Mr. Hines?
Mr. Scott? Whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides that the Board of Commissioners may hold closed meetings for certain purposes set forth in paragraph 2.2-371A of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended, and whereas in compliance with the requirements of the code, the topics to be discussed are set forth below, and the subpar paragraphs of paragraph 2.2-3711 Alpha authorize a discussion of the topics in closed session are set forth in parenthesis after each topic. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners shall meet in closed meeting for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body at Portsmouth Center adopted this date of March 2018.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Jiggetts?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Ms. Revel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, I'm sorry, and Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. We're closed. I'll ask those that are not in, just if they need to leave.
Mayor, both City Council and EDA has resolutions to come out.
All right. If you would, if you would. Yes. Is there a motion to certify our closed session?
I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah.
It was always the first name.
I confuse them all the time.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Sumis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, now therefore be hereby resolved that each commissioner, unless his or her prior contrary statements in the minutes of this meeting hereby certifies that, to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting by the commissioners.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Jiggetts?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Ms. Revel?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you so much. This brings us to the second item on the agenda, and that's economic development with limited imminent domain. And I assume that this is a briefing from the city attorney?
This is, no, it doesn't have to be imminent.
I believe that's correct. I believe Mr. Ashby had a brief introduction.
Right. Item two.
It's got my wheels moving.
You want to tee it off?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Chairman Hines, Vice Chair, Thompson, and members of the EDA, over the last 10 years, quite a bit has changed with regard to imminent domain and the landscape as it relates to economic development. Jeff Miller this morning is going to give you a bit of an overview of those matters that have altered and changed, that shaped the legal framework under which we deal with EDA. This is just a primer, a couple of slides, just to make sure everyone understands what the current environment is that you all go forward with your discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of EDA. As Mr. Ashby said, I'll just kind of give a brief overview of eminent domain and how that power has changed over the past 15 years or so, and the impact of that on redevelopment. Before 2005, mid 2000s, eminent domain was a very powerful tool for redevelopment in Virginia. Under Title 36 of the Virginia Code, cities and housing authorities could jointly adopt what were called redevelopment plans. And in a redevelopment plan, you would designate an area of the city for redevelopment, and the only requirement was that the area had to be at least 50% blighted, 50% or more blighted. Once you had adopted a redevelopment plan, city and PRIHA could then go and designate properties to be acquired within the redevelopment area. Properties to be acquired did not themselves have to be blighted. So from an area redevelopment standpoint, you could designate an area and know that you would have the power to acquire property within that area using eminent domain. Redevelopment plans were a large part of development within the city for through the 70s, 80s, 90s, early 2000s. There are some examples listed. Mid-City in particular is a good example of how valuable the power of eminent domain was. Most of Mid-City Mall was owned by a family in New York, and for years, they sat on the property, presumably they were taking depreciation, putting their money into the property. The city had tried to contact them for years to try and get them to convey the property, finally adopted a redevelopment plan, designated the property for acquisition. They got a letter saying, hey, we're going to condemn your property, and they were on the phone within the week. So it was a very powerful tool. And that was resolved amicably. It was an agreement, not an actual condemnation, but it was the power of eminent domain that put the city in the place to trigger acquisition there. In 2005, United States Supreme Court decided the case of Kelo v. New London. New London was in Connecticut, and they were trying to condemn Kelo's property. And the sole basis for the condemnation was economic development. There was no argument it was for a public building. There was no argument that the property was blighted. They're simply condemning for economic development. The Supreme Court ruled in favor of New London. They said that the federal constitution allows for the condemnation for the sole purpose of economic development. So the case itself was a major win for the power of eminent domain. However, there was a huge backlash from property rights advocates in Virginia and everywhere across the nation, and there were several changes in the law that resulted. In 2007, Virginia General Assembly adopted section 1-219.1 of the code, and this was a new provision on eminent domain that trumped all other eminent domain provisions in the code, including those applicable to the city, PPIC, PRIHA, VDOT. This provision trumped them all. And basically, it limited eminent domain to, number one, if you're going to acquire for occupancy by the public, so park, street, municipal building, that can still be condemned. Or number two, you could still condemn for blight, but the property itself had to be blighted, and you had to prove that the property was blighted. So no longer could you do a redevelopment plan and acquire any property within the area, blighted or not. In addition, there were a number of additional subsequent amendments to state law that changed presumptions in court, that granted greater damages to condemnation. You can now get lost profits, loss of access. So eminent domain became much more expensive, and there became a lot of procedural challenges that were available, including that you had to show that the primary purpose, as locality or political subdivision condemning, was not economic development. So even if you're condemning for blight, if your primary purpose was still economic development, you're going to lose in court. The effect is that the use of blight to condemn for economic development is no longer a viable option for localities. I'm sorry, I jumped too quick on the slide, but there are two more things. In 2007, the federal CDBG program regulations changed, and the Fed said that you could no longer use CDBG funding for any project involving eminent domain. That had been a major funding source for acquisitions through time. Also, in 2012, Virginia adopted a constitutional amendment. What that did was essentially cement the changes wrought by section 1-219.1 in the Virginia Code. Of course, you can amend a Virginia Code section any year, but to change the constitution, you have to have a constitutional amendment. So the effect of that is that, the effect of that is we're never going to have pre-Kelo eminent domain back in Virginia again. We're never going to have that as a tool for economic development in Portsmouth or the rest of Virginia. That makes plant area acquisition, plant area redevelopment, much more difficult than it was 20 years ago. It means that control of property is relatively more valuable now for, through locality or instrumentality because it's harder to acquire property. And it also requires a bit of a longer-term strategic view about what areas may need to be redeveloped in the future, whether there's going to be strategic property acquisition, and how best to achieve that. So that is the presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And Mayor, again, we provide this sort of like a background to assist you all with the, with Ms. Perrier and your overall discussion, sort of the entry presentations to kind of bring a number of current issues before you as you all decide to have your retreat and discuss the issues that interplay throughout. And so I think Ms. Perrier may be next, and then the rest of the presentations will...
Any questions, sir?
I have a quick question. Is that why, right now, I'm just looking across the list, but really, I'm seeing Norfolk using the housing authorities to basically to pay market value for some properties that are in their redevelopment scope right now? Is that why you think they're doing that? Because the eminent domain is a little bit more difficult, and they want to be able to have all those pieces in their, in the puzzle down the road?
I think so, yeah. I think there's a definite need to think strategically about what you may need down the road and find a way to acquire.
Isn't that driving up the cost to do that down the road?
The ultimate cost, yeah. And that's another loss of eminent domain is that, under the Title 36 rules, any value that the locality added to the redevelopment area through redevelopment was not included in the price paid for condemnation of future properties in the area. But that's obviously not applicable anymore.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. And Dr. Pat, would you...
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as the mayor introduced Mrs. Perrier, which we're all familiar with, and she will come forward now and, from this point forward, facilitate the meeting.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. No, no, you're not in my way, because you know, I'll wander all around. So eventually, everyone will be in my way. So, yes, it's, so, thank you for inviting me to join you all again. It's always an honor and a pleasure to work with you all. I always leave after meeting with you. I'm always inspired and energized and excited about where Portsmouth is going. A few words about the retreat. The goal today, the goal of the retreat is to carve out this time to talk together about how you move this vision forward. This is a high level, these are high-level strategic conversations today. We know that there are always issues of capacity and resources, and we can't ignore those. But this is a time to put them aside just for a moment. Think big, think strategically, think cohesively of what you can accomplish to move this vision of Portsmouth being a prosperous port city, Portsmouth being a lifelong learning city, Portsmouth being a safe and friendly city. How you all together move that vision forward. At council's retreat back in February, again, there was focus on what we call the four big things: education, image, branding, marketing, how to make Portsmouth a smart city, and how to really strategically look at that proper gateway revitalization. And so these are all tied to this. You all are all tied to that. And so we want to talk about how we move those things forward in big picture ways. Welcome to our observers. Thank you for coming. As with retreats, this is an opportunity for the council and the EDA to have those conversations. So it differs in some ways in like a public hearing or public comment. So we're delighted you're here to observe, and should you have questions or comments, I'm sure that the members of these bodies would be available, you know, after, to chat with you. My role is to keep you, hopefully, keep you on track, to, you know, ask questions, to make sure that issues are clarified, and to make sure that we're out by 3 o'clock. Usually, that's usually kind of the most important thing people say, are we going to be out here by 3? So yes, we will. So help me work through that. What I like to do before, and you all know this, as you've worked with me before, is to limit the conversation along, to help us work together to really kind of set some ground rules.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, you have to use the eyes in the back of your head. He's got this.
He's got it.
You know, for the longest time, my grandchildren actually thought I had eyes in the back of my head. They're outgrowing that now, unfortunately. So, ground rules. You know, so how do you all want to move your work along today? And these are usually things like, everyone participates?
Yes.
Sure. Everybody.
Every question is important.
Every question is important? Open dialogue. What was it, Elmo? Oh, my gosh, she remembered Elmo. That's very important. Okay. So, just to refresh your voice, Matt and Ray are always smiling because everybody loves Elmo. Elmo, anyone you all can invoke Elmo. Elmo is enough, let's move on. So that if the conversation bogs down, somebody can say, is this, are we ready to call Elmo on this?
People are alike, but specifically we differ.
I'm sorry?
People are alike, but specifically we differ.
True.
That's very important to recognize.
And to respect those differences.
Yeah.
And so those of us in organizational development, consensus has a really specific definition. You know, it's certainly, yes, we all want to work together and think together and make a decision together. But in terms of organizational terms, it's, everybody understands the issue. Everyone has had an opportunity to weigh in on the issue, and that if a decision is made on the issue, everyone can publicly support it. And so when we say consensus, are we, do we have consensus that that's the definition from which we will work? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Hi. That's good. I'll also establish a parking lot because there will be issues that come up that are important, but maybe aren't as strategic or big thinking as we want, but we don't want to lose it, put it in the parking lot. And then at the end of this, I will do a summary report that I'll submit to Mr. Hines and Mero for you all. I say that because as the day goes, my, you can see, my writing will degrade, so don't worry that you can't read it, you know, worried that I can't read it. And we'll move on. I think we have a number of good presentations to continue to kind of set the framework for this. Again, we want to talk about, you know, vision alignment, how everybody does their part, recognizing that people are like but different. People, entities are alike, and that they support the same vision, but that they're different. So how do you cohesively make sure that everyone works together to do what we're all here for, which is, you know, advance Portsmouth?
As we think about the future, why don't we plan to have just a short break at 10:30? Five minutes?
Yeah, I think there's lunch coming at some point. Please say yes, because I don't want people to...
I'd take consensus with me.
So, yes. Consensus at 10:30, yes. All right, now you're just following. There are, there will be, we'll pause for question and answers, but many of these presentations really have a flow to them. And so you don't feel like you've got to ask questions. And then at the very end of the, at the day, we want to carve out like a last hour to really take all this information that we've learned and apply it to kind of a case study that's relevant to Portsmouth. So is that fair? Does that sound great? Right. Break at 10:30. Mr. Moore, I think you are, are you on? Dr. Pat?
Yes, we have this visual as created so that we can understand the organization of the PPIC, EDA, Portsmouth Economic Authority, City Council, actually being the elected governing body that oversees everything that flows down from the city manager to, the city manager being oversight of economic development, and economic development being that gatekeeper that works with all three of the bodies that are aligned by dotted lines. And Mr. Ashby advised that we put the dotted lines because...
Because, as you all know, specifically PPIC, EDA, and PRIHA are separate organizations, but certainly PPIC and EDA works through the staffing of the Economic Development Authority. PRIHA does not utilize city staff, but there has been historically development issues across all three bodies. So while there's no, in some respect, there's no direct line in terms of city government, we all play roles, and you all rely on the economic development operation in many respects. That's the purpose of the direct line. We know that they're independent bodies, but they rely on the resources and whatnot in terms of that common goal between the three bodies.
All right.
With that said, we'll have our first presentation, which is incentive for development, presented by Mr. Robert Moore, Economic Development Director.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right. I introduce myself very quickly. I'm Robert Moore, the Director of Economic Development here for the City of Portsmouth. This morning, certainly, we will talk about a number of different things and different topics, but we will start off with another tool in our toolbox, if you will, and that would be the economic development incentives. Incentives in economic development always are a talking point, always a point of discussion, whether internally and externally. So this morning, I wanted to take the opportunity to just kind of go through the incentives that we have and that we currently utilize in our toolbox, talk about where we should go, and some suggestions for the future. And then we will more than likely roll right into that 10:30 timeframe, come back, and we'll start talking about some other items after that, if that's okay. All right?
Very good.
From our standpoint currently in economic development, we have several incentives that we utilize. Certainly, the Virginia Enterprise Zone is probably one of the ones that are most utilized. That is certainly a collaboration between economic development, the city, and the state of Virginia. That zone, we actually have two, but the first zone was established back in 2010, and the second zone was established back in 2014. We have two zones. Again, one zone, Zone One, is primarily commercial in nature, covers downtown, midtown, and some portions of Churchland. Then you have Zone Two, which is more industrial to the northwestern portion of Portsmouth. That zone and that program has a number of different incentives that are utilized. For example, there's a real property investment grant that is done through the state. We have had projects such as Interchange, and their building utilized that grant. We have, and that's paid out by the state. We have grants that are paid out by the city here locally. For example, a development fee rebate. That type of grant is a rebate on a portion of the permitting fees, site planning review fees, use permit fees, and things of that nature that are associated with a project located, again, in these zones. Very productive program, and again, we utilize this throughout the year. Every year, we have to do an annual report that is due in July for this program. And it's something that we actually have to utilize in order to keep the program, okay?
Before you leave that...
Yes, sir.
And we'll ask questions as we go along. How about that? Give us an example on the enterprise. What type of incentive quantitatively, in round numbers, did they get?
So, for example, the, I'll use the Interchange building, the Interchange building that just went up, 200,000 square feet. That was a former Watley plant. The real property investment grant that they received, they are eligible for up to $200,000. And that's based off meeting certain thresholds. And just using round numbers, thresholds are such. If you redevelop a property, the threshold is $100,000. Anything above $100,000, you are awarded, or could be awarded, up to 20% of the difference. So, for example, if the Interchange came in and they're redeveloping the property, and let's say they just spent $600,000, the difference between the threshold, and that's $600,000, of course, is $500,000. The difference between the threshold and that $600,000, of course, is $500,000. They are eligible for up to 20% of that $500,000. Now, I say eligible for and up to because there is also a job creation grant that is paid out of the same bucket of money, if you will, through state. So, what happens is that job creation grant is actually paid out first through the state's policies. So, what happens is the real property investment grant, you're really averaging about 70 cents, 75 cents on the dollar. So, while they'll be eligible for 200,000, the average they will probably get is about 140, 150, depending on how much they are paying out, the state is paying out in the job creation grants. But again, based off the investment that they have made, which is almost $13 million, they are eligible for the full $200,000. The cap is $200,000, that's the most you can actually have on that property. Now, certainly, if they come in and when they do the build outs for their potential tenants, they will be eligible for the development fee rebate. So, the building permits associated with that build out, they would be eligible for, on average, 50% of that fee as well. Yes?
Is there a percentage on what the state fund and what the city fund out? How is it broken down into...
Well, the way it's broken down is there are certain incentives that are just state related. So, when it comes to that, that real property investment grant, that is not something that the city is paying. That is literally coming out of the state's program. We pay, again, some other incentives, like the development fee rebate. There are some tax incentives that are associated, but we have the lower amount, if you will, as far as any type of payout.
Are we still paying, offering grants or credits if they hire residents from the enterprise zones? Is that still in place?
That is through the state as well. You do also have, on top of that, outside of the enterprise zone, you certainly do have the Virginia Jobs Investment Program, or VJIP, as it is stated, but again, that is through the state. All right? So, from there, so...
Hold on. One question, Robert, how's that incentive paid? Is it via tax credits or...
That is actually cash.
That is cash?
That is cash, yes, sir. So, what happens is, and this has changed over the last couple of years. At one point, it was a check, and then last year, they attempted to do the EFT, or Electronic Funds Transfer, into the business's account. I don't know how well that went, so I think we're back to checks now. Certainly, somewhere you end up at the bank. So, let's say it that way. But yes, sir, that is a cash grant, and the same with the development fee rebates. Those are, that's a cash payment, that is, that is processed through economic development.
Those are one-time grants, correct?
They are, well, they're not, I wouldn't say they're one-time grants. You can come in, and if someone continues to redevelop the property, again, you can, you can apply for that again. So, that's not a one-time, one-and-done situation.
So, for like the job creation grant, could they stretch that over five years instead of hitting their books at one?
We encourage that. Because the job, the threshold is normally creating five jobs. So, if they come in now, and let's say they create 20 jobs, and then five years from now, they add another 30 or 40 jobs, they're eligible for another grant.
Perfect.
Is it actually jobs or positions? Because it used to be positions.
It's jobs.
It's jobs now, okay.
All right. So, next, we have on our list, the local incentive program. That program is through our Economic Development Authority, which you have here. That granted, or that program is a matching grant program for the most part. You have a facade improvement grant, you have a interior build-out grant. The facade improvement grant pays out up to $25,000. Again, that's a matching grant, so if they put in 50,000, you can receive up to $25,000. The interior build-out grant is a matching grant, up to $10,000. So, again, using that same model, if you spend 20,000, you potentially could give back $10,000. That program, we certainly discussed that at our recent Economic Development Authority Retreat back on the 23rd. Currently, that grant, or those, this grant program is in certain locations throughout the city. The discussion was conducted to expand that program, and I believe there was consensus to, as we talk about consensus, there was consensus to expand that program and to potentially offer some additional types of grants. That has not been voted on, however. That will be voted on, if I'm not mistaken, at our March 20th EDA meeting.
If I could just chime in real quick. First and foremost, Commissioners Lincoln and Revel did an excellent job vetting this out. Actually gave us a planned approach to even further expansion as we move through this. But our body did, did meet on the 23rd at our regular retreat. We did agree to, based on the research that was done, to expand this in July 2018 to include the Churchland and Victory Boulevard corridors. And we're actually, this gives another, it's kind of like a soft opening of this. It's going to allow some time for staff to make changes to marketing materials and applications and things of that nature. But we have come to a consensus to allow those, those particular areas to, to put in applications, and we would naturally accept them, of course. One other item that I think is a pretty powerful grant, especially for new, new and startup businesses, we are, have a consensus to bring the sign grant back in as well into this. So, with an up to $2,500 matching grant for that. And then, we do have a planned approach in terms of reaching out to the 2020, in January 2020, to bring in Midtown into that, because there's a lot of new development that came in at that. There may be some more opportunity there. And then, in 2021, to move down the Portsmouth Boulevard corridor into Western Airline Boulevard areas as well in our city. So, naturally, we're going to monitor even some of our older ones that have been a part of this facade and a part of this local incentive package, see if applications still continue to come in on our older, established ones. And if there's not, then the consensus was maybe to review on a yearly basis, adding new ones, taking some of the old ones off. So, it is something we are going to monitor throughout. But I think it was very productive, and I think it gives us a game plan going forward. So, staff, and I'd like to thank them for doing an excellent job with that.
Sure. So, and that program, again, has been very successful. Also, we have a technology zone that we are proposing as part of the, not necessarily as part of the FY19 budget, but we are working, staff is working internally, economic development, the city assessor's office, and the information technology, in proposing a technology zone. We are seeing an uptick and an increase in the technology-based businesses that we have coming into Portsmouth. We see them locating in specific areas, more specifically, like the Mass Center and the Mass and things, places like, such as that. So, we see that as an opportunity to provide an incentive for those technology-based businesses. We're still formulating that, that, that program, but essentially, we are thinking that there will be some type of tax incentive with those businesses locating. And that should help us land as well some data centers and things of that nature. But you will hear about that as we formalize the program more. Certainly, we have the hub zones, which is more of, it's not really a, a incentive from a cash standpoint, but it is an incentive for individuals and businesses located in the hub zone, the historically underutilized business zones. That allows them kind of some extra credit, if you will, when you have those types of businesses located in that zone, when they apply for different types of opportunities for their business. So, if they're putting in for some type of federal contract, there's some extra credit there for you. Certainly, you have, we all know about the historic tax credit programs that we have through the state, through the Department of Historic Resources. That is something that historically has been utilized here in Portsmouth. And I would say primarily on homes, but we have seen an uptick in historic tax credits being utilized on buildings downtown from a standpoint of redeveloping multifamily. Most recently, I believe, the new current building is something that would be eligible for historic tax credits and could be utilized to revitalize that building for multifamily.
Is the developer using tax credits?
Yes, sir.
They are?
And that's again through the state, but we like to try to keep track of that just so we understand how that is being utilized and that make sure that it is being utilized. And we have, we haven't previously done that well of a job in keeping up that, but we are trying to do that going forward.
Robert, what government entity can use, deal with the historic tax credits?
As far as, you mean, can the EDA, for example, utilize historic...
EDA, you know, PPIC, are there any other organizations beyond that that can use historic tax credits?
I'd have to research that to see exactly, you know, where everyone falls. Normally, it's a, it's a private business owner, or a private developer, or a private homeowner that utilizes that, that type of tax credit, if you will. But I could certainly report back as far as what entities, from a level standpoint, can utilize that.
That'd be good to know.
And the owner can actually sell those credits, right?
Yes.
And that's a private transaction that's not governed by any...
That's through the state.
That can, through the state?
The Department of Historic, as far as the transaction is concerned, that's through the, that's a private transaction. So, if you come in and you wanted to, you're revitalizing your home or your business location, yes, sir, that would be a private transaction. The state would be involved from a standpoint of understanding that that is, that is happening, but yes, sir.
And that, because it's a private transaction, it can be anywhere from 100% or something on the dollar?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And is that for historic district, or is that for anywhere in the city?
Well, there's historic district, and then your home has to be in a, be designated, has to reach a certain threshold as far as the age of the building, the age of the home, so certain factors. It's not just you're located in a historic district.
Mr. Moore?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Where will your annual report be distributed showing how much was granted under each program, and who received it?
We have not historically done an annual report detailing that situation. We can certainly put something like that together. I would say if that were to be the case, it would be July, say, the end of July, beginning of August, because July 1 is when the enterprise zone annual report is due, for example. But we could certainly, based off the fiscal year, put something like that together.
There's no... So, that's information that should be publicly distributed on an annual basis at least. Who, how much is actually distributed, and who receives it?
Yes, sir. Our office will...
Foreign Trade Zone.
Yes, and then the Foreign Trade Zone, I save that because that also falls under the Port of Virginia Development Zone. The Port of Virginia is, has a great grant program and kind of development program that utilizes a number of tax credits. If you, you have, you increase port volume, if you increase barge and rail usage, taking trucks off the road, there are tax credits for that. But more specifically, there's an economic and infrastructure development grant. And that grant basically deals with job creation and investment for certain types of uses when it comes to the port. So, everything from cross-docking to distribution to freight forwarding, all of those are payable and are part of a, a development program through the, through the port. Also, as part of that is the designation of a foreign trade zone. Okay, I'll go back to the Interchange Building. The Interchange Building should, could and should receive the designation for a foreign trade zone. So, what happens is you, there is an opportunity to pay, to have duty-free transactions. So, if you have something that comes in to the port that needs to be manipulated in some way, shape, or form, changed, and then go out until it is actually manipulated, changed, and sent back out, there's no duty paid on that, on that, or tax paid on that, on that freight that comes in. That is a great opportunity for us here in Portsmouth, because the businesses that we are associated with, again, mainly maritime, mainly logistics, we are seeing an uptick in all of the port-related businesses that we see coming into the city.
Under that, take Interchange, for example, because they qualify for a Port of Virginia grant, and that grant comes from the port?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What are the restrictions on that?
The restrictions as far as the program...
The port grant? I mean, how much money could they get? Is it a percentage of the development, or is it...
There's, so there's a couple of different ways that it can, that the payout can happen. Really, it comes from the job creation, and depending on the type of job, going back to what Commissioner Jigges was speaking of, these jobs can pay anywhere from $1,000 per job to up to $3,000 per job, depending on the type of use we're talking about. Then there's also a development, I'm not going to say a rebate, but essentially, that's what it is, some cash back, if you will, for making that investment and utilizing the port in that investment. So, with Interchange being what we consider now and call now the Portsmouth Logistics Center, and with the users that are going into that building, they are distribution. They are sales and distribution, they will be utilizing the port to send their products all over the country and all over the world. And because of that, they will have the opportunity to utilize this grant. Yes, sir?
Yes.
Is there a, would there be a good use for maybe like a map that, like, details each one of these zones as maybe part of your sales techniques and strategies that maybe you can lay into like a GIS program or something of that nature?
So, we actually have that. We actually utilize that now, and I believe all of these zones, not necessarily Port of Virginia Development Zone, we'd have to put that on there, but the hub zone, the local incentive program, and I believe the enterprise zone are all on our GIS at this point on the website. Also, we are working on a new website for economic development, and we will make sure those, those maps are on there as well.
Dr. Worsky?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore, as a business approaches you, how are they educated on these incentive programs? Is there a manual? For example, the question that Mayor Ro just asked as far as the criteria, how are they informed on that?
Well, historically, if they come to us, or if we go to them, either way, we make sure when we talk about a property, let's, let's just use the example of a, a business comes in and says, "I'm looking to move my business to Portsmouth," or "I'm looking to build my business in Portsmouth." When they have an idea of the location, because a lot of this is based off where in the city they are going to be located, we then automatically bring them a package that shows, "These are all the incentives that you will be eligible for." And then we say eligible, because we don't know what their investment's going to be yet. We don't know what their use is going to be yet. Once we whittle that down, our job is to make sure, especially from the enterprise zone standpoint, that they, if they're eligible for those, those incentives that they put in for. Because as the zoning administrator for the enterprise zone, I have to explain every year why someone who was eligible did not put it forward.
But my, the reason that, would it be educational for a business that may not be familiar with any of these programs to have some type of documentation that EDA provides that gives some type of definition?
Yes, sir.
Criteria? Because even just sitting here now, I'm quite sure all of us on council and on the commissions aren't familiar definitionally with all of these programs. So, I would think that's something that would be user-friendly for businesses to have so that you wouldn't have to necessarily initiate the conversation, but they could be informed and can also direct their businesses and maybe beneficial under these different types of programs.
Yes, sir. So, on our website currently, our existing website, all of these zones, except for the Port of Virginia Grant, is on, that is actually listed with the applications on our website. And then again, on our new website, it will be more interactive, more user-friendly, so it will be more...
Well, I'm talking about all of the programs, not just one, but all of them?
Certainly, all of them, except for, as of right now, on our portofvirginia.gov website on economic development, all of these programs are on there except for the Port of Virginia Development Zone. So, we are working, as we redevelop our website, we're looking to have, again, something more interactive and easier to locate when it comes to our, our incentives. But all of this is actually listed with the actual applications for each one of these programs.
Actually, your website, everything, I think, is really...
It was just redone recently.
User-friendly and business-friendly now. It really is very good, with the overlays of the zones and whatever.
Thank you.
We're taking it to another level.
Of course, it's always a good idea to have some marketing tool, handouts, actually, that people can take away and have.
So, we do have, we do have handouts. A lot of times, what we find, though, is that as we talk about investment and individuals coming into the city, most individuals go to the website before they come in the office and ask for something, you know, in hand.
As rules change, you can update it.
And as rules change, we can update those a lot quicker than we can pieces of paper.
Right. Can you forward us the, you said there is a handout that you use, that you give to businesses?
It's, it's everything from the website, yes, sir.
So, you print out the website and give them...
We actually already have it processed and put in a format, so I could send you the PDF, yes, sir, of all the incentives, yes, sir.
We'll send it to all council.
And that would be in the format that a business would receive it?
Yes, sir.
Is that a pretty involved document?
It is a pretty involved document if you include all of the, the actual applications. So, what we have is, we have it actually set up, and again, this is kind of, we're kind of working backwards, you know, as you change, if you have changes in the office and changes in staff as far as, from a direction standpoint, we've gone back and looked at what we need to update and what we need to kind of redo, if you will. That is one of the things that we've done. So, we've put it in a PDF format that is readily available, so if anyone comes to us... So if anyone comes to us, we have literally just an incentives package I can email to you and it's, I don't know how many megabytes it is, but certainly we can send the condensed version that doesn't have the applications, but has all the information regarding the, the actual programs.
Yeah, 'cause I, I would think a business, a handout, 'cause not all businesses are as, you know, internet sophisticated as others because of technology disparities. And so I would think a handout, at least finding what these are for them, then they can ask questions further.
Yes, sir.
Or even when you go to presentations, having that available.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, members of council, and, and the Economic Development Commission, as Mr. Moore has indicated, he, there, there are handouts, but they are outdated. They are all being updated, as is with the website.
Yes.
All of that information, they will have a hand copies for those who don't, are not going there. But the information that they have right now is not updated. So as soon as all of that is updated, it will be available in the brochure, it's not so much just copies, the brochure kind of explanation.
So if I tap the disc in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Um, because, because of its relationship to, you know, the, the larger marketing, business-friendly, economic development implications, so I don't, I wanna make sure we capture that. So is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
You know, to educate the businesses, potential businesses, you know, and however, you know, and because it is a valuable marketing tool as well as, you know, the incentives themselves.
But once it's done, you're gonna send it to?
Everybody, yes.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, it's, um.
It's 10:30, so I'll continue that.
Let's, let's keep going on this part.
We only have one part left.
Um, I really want to try to get clarification on an incentive I read about, I guess it was last year, the EB5. Have we designated a five perimeter in Portsmouth? And do we have some foreign investors looking to take advantage of it so they can get their visa?
So the EB5 program, just talking candidly, is a changing program. Essentially, the, what happens is there's an investment that's made and based off a certain amount of investment, you can obtain a visa. Being candidly and with counsel in the room, I would say that that has become a political hot potato from a standpoint of how it is officially utilized. Again, because of the trade-off is investment for visas. So we have not, to this point, utilized anything like that. But that is essentially the, the program in and of itself.
Yeah, I think for the million dollars investment or 500,000 and create 10 jobs, that's how it started out.
Yes, that was started out. Like, you know, I would just say that we have not utilized that in the city of Portsmouth.
Okay. Thinking of that with, with the port-related activities, you know, that that still is a catalyst for possible development overseas, investors looking to obtain a visa, could invest the money. Yeah. Say that again, Aaron.
I think it's pushed by a lot of attorneys, so these people are good attorneys.
A lot of attorneys have pushed it.
They would help, well, they would help navigate them.
Okay.
It would be something that you should try.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have some other, we were gonna go and flow into a discussion of incentives and how, as we talk about, you know, the expansion of the program and things of that nature, but I think we're gonna take a quick break, is that what we'd like to do?
Well, will that disjoint this conversation?
He only has one frame left.
Okay, well, let's, let's continue.
Okay.
You have one frame.
Yes, sir. So with regards to the topic of, of economic development, you know, state and local incentives to stimulate economic development have actually increased in Virginia as they have across the United States. And state and local governments continue to deal with the realities of economic transition created by globalization, such as EB5, EB5, and technological advances. And the quest for private investment and jobs in an increasingly competitive global economy is raising the stakes of economic development. The localities that aggressively use incentives to succeed can potentially win, but the question is, you know, at what cost and toward what end? Certainly, we've seen the incentives that we have, or the kind of exterior feel-good, some of those incentives. But incentives should for all intents and purposes result in jobs and tax revenue that would not otherwise exist. But proving that the incentives really influence business decisions is actually very difficult. There's, there's not, it's really difficult to tie in and say that because someone gave someone $10 million, that was the reason they came to a locality. Again, because that would also mean essentially that if someone gave that person $12 million, they'd go somewhere else. It's much like applying for a position at, at an employer. The current shift in economic development policy recognizes that actually job retention maybe is just as important as job creation, especially in areas of high poverty. Sharing project costs and revenues within a region and encouraging companies to hire locally, as we talk about our Hire Portsmouth, and invest in distressed areas actually enhances the fairness of any type of incentive. Safeguards like performance-based contracts, as we've talked about in, in previous discussions this morning, but clawback provisions can help localities avoid paying too much for too little. Furthermore, things such as permit, fast-tracking, and speed-to-market are now trending to be more of an incentive because the property, the prospect will actually understand their overall costs sooner rather than later. When we talk about the utilities, we talk about things of that nature, they'd actually wanna get to market faster than you giving up, per se, you know, a couple million dollars. The city must clearly understand the trade-offs among fairness, efficiency, effectiveness, and accountability when it comes to using incentives to promote job creation and private investment. Going forward, these should be the guiding principles. There should be more enforceable contracts, greater transparency and disclosure, a more rigorous cost-benefit analysis, improve opportunities and support for hiring locally and hiring the unemployed. And there should be a greater focus on small business, existing industry, and job training, again, as we talk about our Hire Portsmouth. Taking all of these together, these enhancements in any type of incentive policy should not only strengthen our negotiating position with new companies and existing companies, but also maximize public benefits and protect the public investment that goes into these incentive deals.
Yes, sir. Robert, who, who oversees the compliance? Is that the state's responsibility and how, how effective is that?
Well, the state of Virginia is much like the state of Missouri. It's a show-me state. You have to make the investment and make the improvements first. And then we have to document that. So for example, in the, in the enterprise zone, I use, again, I'll go back to the interchange building, there is a, a certain tie, everything is tied to the certificate of occupancy. So nothing is paid out until that certificate of occupancy is, is released. So for example, if you were to have a business utilize the Real Property Investment Grant, they have to obtain their certificate of occupancy by December 31st. Let's say for this year, December 31st, 2018, in order to apply in April of 2019. Okay? So for interchange, interchange did not receive their certificate of occupancy until January 2nd. So they have to wait until, actually, April of 2019 in order to apply for that grant. And they have to document everything that was done to show that they met the qualifications. The same thing with any type of incentive that we do, whether it's a facade improvement grant or any type of incentive. We have to see what it looked like before. You have to turn that in with your application and submit that with the application. And then before we end up paying anything out, staff goes out, takes pictures, and makes sure that what was written into the contract, into the development agreement that was signed, is actually enforced and that was done. Anything outside of that is not paid for, and anything that was, that is not done is not paid for.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir.
On your, on your previous screen, how much of the incentive programs are tied to local, actual local city council funds that is provided to EDA?
Well, the EDA's program is funded by the EDA. So that's literally what we pay out, that $25,000 for a facade improvement grant, that's coming out of the EDA's budget. They have budgeted every year about $300,000 roughly for that. And they've paid out roughly 100, 120,000 is what they've averaged since the program is, has come into fruition. But that's paid out of their budget. As far as the enterprise zone, that is a state and again, local program, so that's coming out of the city's overall budget, if you will, but that's set aside again for that program.
So the local, the local incentive programs, that's purely EDA funds that you generate from?
Yes, sir.
So, so your issue of trying to correlate whether incentives are correlated with where business is located, that's, that's more of an internal issue that EDA is dealing with?
That's, yes, sir. I mean, you have, I'm not gonna say it's an issue, it's just a discussion. I think everywhere you, you turn, you're seeing that a business may have received an incentive to locate somewhere. And normally, that is, that money or that, those monies are tied to some program, some type of investment program. But that investment program is also tied to a funding stream through the cities or the localities. So for example, some localities utilize the cigarette tax to fund, and that could be very successful. But again, that's tied to a tax. Whereas here in the city, everything is either the EDA pays it out of their, their budget from the sale of land and disposition of land, or we have it tied to the interchange. If we look to, and, and the discussion is, always comes up, as you look to potentially, possibly expand any type of incentive program, you just wanna keep these, these principles in mind. But you wanna be fair. You wanna make sure that there are some, as you say, some regulations, some guidelines, some clawbacks, some standards that are kept in mind when you do those things.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was curious because the, I know the EDA offers these incentives, but aren't there city-sponsored incentives as well?
No, I'm not aware of any city-sponsored incentives for development.
Well, I could, I could say, for example, we know of developments in this city where developers have received tracts of city land that significantly reduce costs. That, that's an incentive.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware, I'm just speaking of my tenure here, I'm aware of incentives all have been in my short tenure.
We are aware that there are properties in this city that if it were not for city lands attached to it, those developments would not be profitable. And so that's, that's, that's an incentive as well.
But are those handled on a case-by-case basis in the past?
Any?
I think so.
It is.
Yes.
Well, that, that's why I was, when we say these, there are, there are other incentives that, in addition to these, that aren't probably on a case-by-case basis that are captured, are captured.
And we don't, we didn't put that in there as an ex, just for an explanation because that is one case-by-case, and that's not something that we want to, you know, we do have land, certainly, and we'll talk about that as we go throughout the day today. But again, you wanna talk about the fairness and how things are done. So you want to, we don't advertise, "Hey, this is free." Because one, we don't make that decision as far as staff is concerned. So we can't, we can't, we can advertise from a standpoint of it being aggressive, we can be aggressive with the price, but there's nothing that we can do from a, from a staff standpoint that we can say, "It's free," because, because the city owns it. We just don't do that, and that's why we didn't put that in.
I'm not suggesting that at all. You know, I mean, your second, the second point up there is greater transparency and disclosure. And all I was pointing out was that there are other incentives that aren't captured on this, on the screen you just had, that are given on a case-by-case basis, which, if we're talking about equity and fairness, when does that conversation come up and with whom does it come up? And so just, just pointing that out, that that was not an exhaustive list of incentives on citizens.
I think it comes on what I would call creative incentives in order to induce investment in the city based on, tied to certain benchmarks, job creation, tax revenues.
The ability of the potential candidate, the client person attempting to purchase.
Yeah.
I'm privy to conversations, I know exactly what you're talking about. If I could, the previous slide is more of a structured incentivized program that has links that we can follow and, you know, they are pretty straightforward. The conversations that I've, are on the fly. You know, individuals that, for one reason or another, would be of value. So we offer tracts of land at an extreme discount. There's no rhyme or reason somebody comes with a proposal. This conversation generally comes through, through staff. And, you know, we're asked to vote on it eventually, and for the most part, we do.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of council, certainly when you talk about, I, I think the distinction that, that everyone is trying to make is, as Mr. Moore says, when a candidate or someone with an interest comes forward with a interest that come to the city, they may come with a proposal and, whatever you wanna call it, come with their own insight and, and proffer a particular business on a particular location or whatnot. I think distinction here is these programs are applications for which any entity can come in and offer. That does not preclude someone from coming to the city to proffer a particular business development activity. I don't know how we would, other than say, "The city is open for business, please, you know, if you have an interest, come forward," which I think is what all the entities do and entertain that. There is no, I think that is the regular order of business in terms of programming.
Yes.
There is no program other than that, but certainly other entities can come forward with a proposal for a business entity or marketing. And I just don't, short of saying, "We're open for business, bring us your proposals." I don't know how else we convey that information.
I like what, how you described it. That's the structure.
Right.
And just in the normal course of stuff, there's an unstructured, somebody might ask for a discount.
Well, if, if Amazon had jumped up and said, "We wanna come to Portsmouth, and we want all your jail and border fund and city hall property," we'd probably gone, "Okay."
Whatever you want, whatever you need.
It is a case-by-case.
Yeah, exactly. That's creative.
In my previous tenure on council, we, we actually talked about setting monies aside or bucket aside to, to induce.
We're still talking about that.
Right. And that's something that we wanted to do. That way, that money would be there and the city manager wouldn't have to figure out how to come up with the money if there was some big dynamic thing we wanted to do. So you're saying that that's never happened?
Well, it did, the council did appropriate that money and was called, I think, Economic Development War Chest at that time.
Right.
Yeah, there was. We heard that just recently.
You know, nothing's unusual about that. Cities have done utilities in the past the same way, water, for example. I mean, it's, those are one-off structures.
No taxes for any of them.
Fairly common.
In the last few years, we've had an engineering firm we've given money to, they had almost 80 to 100 engineers hired in the city. We've had a medical device company that came in and manufactured medical devices, we gave them grants. Those were all things that were outside of the buy-rite programs you see here. They were case-by-case, and we looked at them as how they were structured, what would they bring to the city? And we got together and said, "What would be something amicable for them and something that we could do feasibly for us?" And those were just two examples that worked.
And I, I think those have to be done and customized and it's publicly voted on and everybody's aware, and y'all, the people on council, they don't like them, they'll vote y'all out. That's why y'all got four votes. I don't have a problem with that, with that, with that type of customizing to meet the needs of a specific business, as long as it's public and you voted on it.
That is a win-win for everybody involved.
So, Mr. Moore, your thought, though, would be that the guiding principles
Yes.
On the next slide?
Yes.
Apply to all of these opportunities?
Certainly.
Dr. Ward. Once again, just to make, make sure the, this is a public meeting and you were presenting economic development programs, and I was just mentioning that
Sure.
That's not an exhaustive list. Maybe if you had a, their creative economic programs and suggested, so just.
Go back down to the slide. And again, maybe we need, the next time we present this, have structured programs and then unstructured.
Customized.
Customized.
Customized, creative, yeah.
Good point. All right. Well, let's, this is a good discussion. Now, we're at a point where we can take a 10-minute break.
That wouldn't be feasible.
Yeah.
It would be another way to say it, but that is not it.
This is our 10- This is our 10:30 break.
Yeah.
And everybody knows.
10 minutes.
Thank you.
What did they say, what time?
Take attendance.
10 minutes.
When we come back.
Tearing first?
I don't know.
We're back in order.
Mr. Moore, you're great to...
Continue. Yes.
I'm sorry, did I just jump on your?
No, he, no, he's ready for it's second on our agenda.
So we've got incentives. And so, how does that link with?
Yes. So, thank you again. As we talk about incentives, and I believe Dr. Wood brought it up, as land being potentially an incentive, certainly, we need to look at the land that we have under, whether it's city control, whether it's EDA control, whether it's under PRHA control. We need to understand really what we have, okay? There needs to be some type of land classification. And again, I will lay the groundwork in saying that some of these discussions that we're having are things that we have embarked on for maybe the first time in the city of Portsmouth, okay? And then the first time in economic development. But we certainly feel as though there should be land classification, and basically tiers, if you will, to the value of property. Increasing investment opportunity through an evaluation of City of Portsmouth's existing inventory, that's what we want to do today, is look at both the sites and existing buildings, and find a way to prioritize these sites. What's ready for market? What building is readily available? What needs to be torn down? What should we have control of? What should we not have control of? Prepared industrial properties are essential for us to be competitive in recruitment and retention. We've got to be able to have the opportunity for businesses to locate. We have to also have the opportunity for businesses to expand. And they can't do that if we don't have the ready sites and ready buildings. Furthermore, the classification will help us emphasize when we talk about that redevelopment, when we talk about future development. So when we look at, where do we want to be in, not tomorrow, not next year, where do we want to be in the next five, 10, 20, 50 years from now? We need to understand what we have, what's the value of what we have. So what we've come up with in economic development is a tiering system. Now, again, we're talking about, this is a reminder of kind of the threshold of how things fall. Certainly, we can't do anything in a vacuum. We have to go through the city manager, we have to go through city council to have those things done. But all of these groups, including PPIC, need to be on board. But essentially, we'd have a classification system. And I apologize, I'm not a standing from the podium type of person. So...
But you're being videoed.
Oh, I am being videoed, so I got to stand. Trying to get out of being videoed, but that's fine. Not a problem. People at home are like, what happened to him? He sounds great, though. He sounds great. But from a land classification standpoint, we have three tiers, tier one, two, and three, okay? And this is not, by all means, this is not an end-all, be-all, and a catch-all. This is an attempt to classify what we have. So for example, a tier one property would be considered something that is 10 acres, pad-ready, okay? Or a building that is at least 40,000 square feet, that can be expanded. The owners, whether it's the city, or whether it's a private owner, they're motivated to move the property. It's properly zoned, infrastructure is in place, maybe you need gas, but it's readily available, things of that nature, easily accessible, and those incentives that we talked about, we can kind of put a dollar figure to that building or that site. Tier two, similar, but you have, it's five acres or more, a 10,000-square-foot building. Again, you still have the owners in there, you still have some, you might have some challenges, but nothing that can't be overcome. Tier three would be two acres, 2,000 square feet. Again, some challenges, maybe it takes some more time to get done. Anything less than that, it's not that it's not important, what it is, though, is that it's something that, more than likely, is not in the purview of where we need to put money into it. I'll give you an example. A .9-acre site that could house a fast-food restaurant, for example, it's not necessarily something we need to throw tens of thousands of dollars into. Whereas a two-acre site where we could put a myriad of different things, that's a different animal. I'll use an example. BASF site, it's privately held, it's our largest piece of industrial zone property, 43 acres, pad-ready, it has been remediated. You have a couple of things you have to do as part of that remediation, but it has a clean bill of health. Again, heavily industri zoned, it's full infrastructure, it needs gas if someone needed to have gas in the site, but that could be readily available through Dominion. And the incentives, it is part of our Enterprise Zone Two. It was actually, Enterprise Zone Two was done specifically to include that piece of property. If you want to look at a building, the, what we call the Portsmouth Logistics Center, or the interchange building, that's a brand-new spec building, speculative building, was built just to have a 200,000-square-foot building. I am happy to report, ink is still wet on the paper, but that will open up full. Again, we've talked about this a number of times. The certificate of occupancy was acquired on the 2nd of January, then 45 days, you don't have any space. That's a great problem to have. Fully motivated, heavily industri zoned. Why these are important is because, because we have a tiering system such as this, when the interchange group comes in and says, now they want to look at another piece of property, we can come in and say, we have a tier one site, we have a tier two site, or so forth. And we know what we can do, or what we need to do, to take that tier three to a tier two, to take that tier two to a tier one. What we're going to find and we're going to see in a little while from Mr. Baldwin's presentation is that there are a number of smaller properties throughout the city, whether the EDA owns them, whether the city owns them, whether the PRHA owns them. Individually, they probably are worth not much. But if we put them together, now they become a tier three, potentially a tier two. But this kind of gives us a classification and a way to put things together and map out our future as we go forward. At the risk of walking away from the podium, that's all I have.
Questions?
Yes.
The tiers, this is actually something, when we went through the VITA conference, Mr. Scott joined me, and Mr. Revel also. This is welcome, I will certainly say, because this is what developers are starting to look towards. They want to be speed to market, they want had-ready sites.
Sure.
All the incentives in the world, you can give them everything in the world, but if every single day it costs them not to be open, it's something they look at. So I definitely think you'd be commended for putting this together. I appreciate it for responding to that.
Yes.
Bill?
Do these relate in any way, Robert, to industry standards, or industry speak?
They do. And I'll put that, I'll put an asterisk on that, and I'm going to tell you why. The state of Virginia, the VEDP, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, they have a similar tiering process, but they start at 100 acres. We're not at that point. So they go 100, they go 50, and then anything less than 50 is that kind of tier three, because they're landing that big fish, that big whale, if you will. We've taken that same concept and put it to a point to where we can have some measurable outcomes. And I'll give you an example to speak to what Chairman Heinz was speaking of. We had a company that recently relocated and moved their entire business from Norfolk to Portsmouth. The name of the company is Exquisite Cabinets. They do high-end cabinets for, whether it's your home, whether it's your business. They moved from leasing in Norfolk to owning, they actually purchased a site in Portsmouth, an existing building. They went from 10,000 square feet to about 15,000 square feet here in Portsmouth. But in order to get the building up to where they needed to have it from a parking standpoint, and even some interior, they're down two weeks. That cost them money. And he wasn't complaining, but you understand, when it comes to this type of tiering, we could have said, hey, now that building was perfect for him, he loved that building. But from this standpoint, we can come back and say, business owner or new business, this is where, if you're looking at speed to market, this is where you want to be. This is the location you want to have. We receive consistently, and on a regular basis, requirements for different prospects from our HREDA, Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance. And the first thing they want to say is, they have a timeframe and when they want to be up and running. This tiering allows us the opportunity to say, this site realistically can meet that timeframe.
Do we have a listing available on which available properties fall into each of the tiers?
So not yet. That is where we are. We first had to come up with the tiering process, and we are now going through that process. As we talk about later on today, some of the land acquisitions that have been had over the many years here in Portsmouth, that is what we're looking to do, as we get some direction forward. Classify these properties, and figure out what we have, and figure out, you know, what needs to be where. Should we just go ahead and bundle everything, instead of waiting for a developer to come in and say, I need this, 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 and this? No, here it is. Here's the bag. And then add as necessary.
What do you think it will be ready?
Well, I hate to say based on staffing, but based on staffing, we're working through the process. You know, I would say in the next 90 days, we should have something that we can present. It won't be fully, it won't be everything, but I think you'll have a good kind of leveling of what we have, you know, a good understanding of what we have.
Very good. Let's see, there are actually companies that will actually come in and do this type of valuation, too. I think that was actually the vendor that made that presentation at the VITA conference.
Timmons Group.
And they were very, it's a very thorough report that allowed, you know, it sounds like they're kind of taking the page out of their playbook.
Yes.
Again, it's a very good first step, it's something that hadn't really existed here. And again, to be commended for that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, it may not fit into the tiers, but some of the undeveloped properties, undeveloped land, we can park that somewhere in this classification process. I appreciate that.
And that's what we're looking at with the undeveloped land, and what should it be, what can it be? And how can we, how can we get it to the point where it's one of these one, two, or three tiers?
Right. Very good.
Do we know where we're going to be more, which level we're going to fall in, having more available property for?
You know, realistically, we're going to be in between tier two and tier three, primarily because one of size. We are very good in the access portion, so infrastructure is great, mobility to get in and out of sites would be great, but I think it's going to be the sheer size. If you asked me today for a building that was between 5,000 and maybe say 20, 30,000 square feet, we have that all day. When you start getting above that, something that's available, high ceilings, so on and so forth, that's when you're trying to get into the, you know, that's when you get into a tier one. You know, something that's 40,000 square feet, has a five-ton crane ready to go.
Is that why interchange was so popular out of the gate?
Yes. Interchange came in with very high ceilings. I think they're, you know, I think you can go as high as 31 feet on the ceilings. It's a wide-open space that can be adjusted as necessary. And that's what we're starting to see. You're going back to, you know, people need space. The Amazons of the world have changed the way business is done. And just recently, Walmart, for example, took down 40,000 square feet of distribution space here in Portsmouth, just to combat that. Yes, sir.
You spoke about speculative buildings briefly. Is that something that, in my research, I've seen that, you know, some EDAs have actually went ahead and started looking at building speculative buildings. Is that something that you would be looking at in this plan, or?
You know, that's a risk. And I would say that more discussion will need to be had, but at this point, no.
Yeah, different economy, different time.
Maybe 30 years from now.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Dr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mayor, Mayor and Commissioner, I'll introduce our next presentation, which is the foundation for all of the discussion we have had previous to Mr. Baldwin coming forward. The city, primarily through Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, has been using community development block grant funds to purchase property for a variety of purposes since the early 1970s. Over the years, a large number of these properties have remained undeveloped, are unused for a variety of reasons. Our team has been working since 2016, consisting of representatives from planning, economic development, and our engineering department, to conduct a review of these properties, to determine the development potential of these properties, as well as compliance with the CDBG program rules. Bob Baldwin, Director of Planning, will provide a summary of the team's findings, including certain recommendations for the future disposal. This is a very detailed presentation, and I ask that you give it specific attention, because this will be the catalyst for some discussions you're going to have after the presentation, and when we get through alignment of functions and land banking. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As Dr. Patton mentioned, we've been working on this property list for quite some time, trying to take a fairly sizable number of parcels, other than, for a variety of reasons over the years, are sort of left out there, undeveloped. And we'll go through some of that. Before we get too deep into that, though, I thought it would be helpful, start off here, taking a look, a little bit of dealing with our CDBG stuff. So this is going to be a review of land that's been purchased by PRHA. And just going back to Mr. Miller's presentation beginning this morning, recognize that there was a lot more authority. We're using CDBG funds. Years ago, we used a larger pot of money from HUD. There was the use of eminent domain, so there's a lot of properties that, over the years, have sort of accumulated. Again, and with PRHA being the primary development partner the city is using, especially back in the days before there was an EDA, when there was just the IDA. So that's one of the reasons that PRHA is such a large, one of the reasons such a large landholder here. Couple of things, sort of rules of CDBG people should be aware of, and I tend to mention this every time we have these conversations, but the city is the CDBG entitlement. So when the money comes down from HUD to the city, any expenditure of CDBG funds by whoever the city's partner might be, in this case, PRHA, the ultimate responsible party is the city. And so when HUD thinks you've got some violation somewhere, they're looking at what you're doing, they come and talk to the city, and it's up to the city to deal with any, what they refer to as sub-recipient. So it's important to recognize that responsibility that lies with the city, ultimately back to HUD. One of the issues you get into these properties, it's really becoming more of an issue, I know sort of been mentioned by PRHA, is the cost of maintaining of a lot of lots, that they have to have the grass cut, be cleaned, whatever. And it's important to recognize you cannot use CDBG funds to maintain properties. If you went from HUD, as you acquire property using CDBG funds, you're supposed to put it into its intended use. And if you end up not doing that very quickly, or if you, for whatever reason, need to cut grass, or pick up trash, whatever you have to do, that's got to come from some other source of funds. You cannot use your CDBG funds for maintenance. What we started out with, and actually, when we started this process back then, there was a larger, more than 91 parcels, I don't want to mention these 91 parcels here, but we were over 100 when we started. But I think you're aware, we've had a few property sales. Wendy's is an example, out on London Boulevard, that had a mixture, and that's another complicating factor. The Wendy's out there had a mixture of properties that PRHA purchased using other funds, and there were a number of lots. And that was actually, I think, 11 lots that made up that Wendy's site, very small parcels in there. So a number of those CDs, and just to give you kind of a, we worked very closely with PRHA at the time. So as they went through the sales with Wendy's, could carve out the CDBG portion, and make sure that HUD got their portion back to HUD. Now, the way that also works, once it goes back to HUD, it comes back around and returns to the city's CDBG line of credit. So any money out there that's made from a CDBG land sale, ultimately works its way back to the city. And in doing this assessment, we considered a number of things. This is a relatively high-level view. We did not, you know, drill down on each individual parcel to the nth degree, but we did look at parcel size, we looked at the configuration relation to our zoning that's out in the field, and we looked at flood zones, make sure we were looking at a property that wasn't, you know, perpetually inundated. A few of the properties out there, in fact, in flooded areas, we wouldn't recommend be developed. But that was kind of the initial scope of the view. Now, when you're using CDBG property, the requirement from HUD is that you use it for an activity that meets what they call their broad national objective. I think everybody's probably familiar with that term. Primarily, what the city's used it for has been for low-moderant income support, it either could be housing, many of these properties were purchased for low-moderant income housing. It can also be, at the time, used for projects, for example, it's been used for infrastructure, for places like Westbury, there's used, CDBG funds were used in that case. And so if you end up either not using it for your intended broad national objective, or you ultimately use it for a purpose not compliant as a broad national objective, the requirement is you pay the money back to HUD, at fair market value at the time of the sale. I just mentioned, we've worked out a pretty good arrangement with PRHA on this. We let them use one of two options. They can have an appraisal done, and we'll take the appraisal as fair market value. The other thing, we use city assessments. If the city assesses at 100% of value, they have the option. One of the reasons we do that, and I use Wendy's again as an example, there was an appraisal done before the Wendy's deal started. By the time they got to the closing... By the time they got to the closing, you had nearly, you know, a year and a half, almost two years passed, so there was a question about, is your appraisal still valid after that much time? So it just has become an alternate, easier tool to leave the option. You either go back and have it appraised again, or we can use city assessed value to meet that requirement. That's worked very well.
Mr. Baldwin, can I make sure I understood you correctly on the, because we've discussed it before, the return of the CDBG funds? If the property is not used for the objective that it was stated, or if it's not one of the national objectives, so does that mean you can change an objective on a property?
Yes, you can actually go through, you can change from one broad national objective to another. I'll give an example, if you purchased as a, for slum and blight removal, which is a category that you, so it's a dilapidated property. Under the HUD program, that's not redevelopment, that's slum and blight removal. So if you take your CDBG funds and you clear that lot, you have met your broad national objective, that's all perfectly legitimate. You didn't turn around later, want to develop the lot, which was not what you originally started with, but you develop it for low moderate income housing, we can go back to HUD and just change the broad national objective. So we're still going to meet a broad national objective, it's just a different one than where we started. The difference would be if you switched over and said, we're going to put Wendy's out there, that wasn't your broad national objective, then there's a repayment requirement because, you know, that doesn't meet the intent of a CDBG program from a federal perspective.
I have a question. In perspective to what you just said, is there any way with HUD to get around not having to pay it back to maybe identify an alternate site to transfer the CDBG money to?
Generally, no. If you identified it for a specific purpose, it can be strategic in how you use your funds. If, remember, if you sold the property, you got the money back around, you could turn around, you now have more CDBG money. I think city council may recall, we did the work session presentation on the CDBG, we showed you some program income in there, it was $300,000 or $400,000. That's property sale. So that'll roll back around, you could reuse that in another place where we'd meet a broad national check.
Okay.
But you can't just be sort of moving around. They track this. One thing that's different, that's changed over the years, and I mentioned this program's been going on for a long time. HUD, when we worked through the office in Richmond, they can see all of this stuff we're doing. They monitor, it's direct. So there's no hiding anything. Okay, we'll make it very clear, we play no games with that. They see everything we're doing. They visit us every year. We get a two or three day visit from the HUD staff. They come down and they go through our whole program, see how we're operating it, make sure we're following all the requirements. So we have a good working relationship with them, by the way, as well. And one I just mentioned here, if you have property acquired using CDBG funds and you're going to sell it to a user or a developer, any proceeds from that sale go back to HUD, circle back around and go back into your CDBG line of credits. The bottom line is, there's no profiting. If the property, for example, you bought it for $100,000 and then, you know, later you sold it for $500,000, you can't pocket the difference. All 500 just turns into program income. So I think that's sort of a.
Dollar for dollar goes back.
Yes.
Yeah, comes back.
Yes.
Can I reuse it then?
Redone.
So that's how that works. So we're going to talk a little bit about.
I've got a question. We talked, and Dr. Wicker brought this up. If you sell it at a discount below the fair market value when it was, what happens?
Well, I was going to mention this, I didn't want to jump ahead to Dr. Wicker's point earlier, but it's a very good point. Once you've purchased a property using CDBG, it is your asset to negotiate. For example, if you're doing low moderate income housing and you want to give the lot away as part of that project, you can give the lot away, because you've already used your federal funds to buy the property. So if you're meeting your broad national objective, that was low moderate housing, you can actually negotiate a sale price to what you think is appropriate. So we'll have a couple of things like that we'll discuss. You know, yes, you have the ability, once you have it that way, that probably, you know, an incentive, one of the incentives for meeting that broad national objective is be able to adjust the sales price of the property. And that just varies. That's also quite frankly, in a lot of these, where you match up other federal, like we take our home funds, maybe there's down payment, closing costs, there's a lot of other programs we try to match up. So if you're trying to provide that low moderate income housing piece, you try to make as much, a good of a financial bundle together to help lower the cost for the buyer. The goal is to get them into the house. That's really the program's intent, is to get someone into a safe, decent, appropriate house. And so we have resources that are provided through both our CDBG and home programs. We try to match up on that. So that's how that works. I mentioned one other thing, too. We'll go back to this, we talked about there were the 91 parcels, actually going to be fewer than that when we get into this. We've taken a stab, and again, this is a work in progress for us, we've taken a stab at, tried to identify from these parcels where we think ultimately, where the property ultimately resides when we get through the process. Like, you know, PRHA, I know, has been working, you know, what they would like to do, again, we have this issue with carrying costs and maintenance, what they would like to do with some of this undeveloped property. But I'm sure this list here, this is the first stab we took at, this is the first 29 parcels, and the recommendation the staff was coming up with was this should remain with PRHA. And primary reason is, these were properties that met a broad national objective and they were acquired for particular projects. So these were project-based acquisitions, whether it be Westbury, or whether it be Effingham Plaza, or Columbia Commons. So if they bought it for a project and that parcel met the broad national objective, you know, our recommendation, that property stay with PRHA, it stays with that, not development. A couple I want to mention here, a little bit unusual on this list, and this is residential, this isn't as much, present as much interest of the EDAs, might be for council, but we'll talk about Area 4. We had broken these down, there's a mapping part of this, we tried to show these parcels in some sort of organized areas, you can see how they work together. The parcels in Craddock, and council may remember, a few years ago, those were purchased using a different, it was a CDBGR program, it was a special program during recession, had a hard deadline on them. Those are for low moderate income housing, and the requirement to meet the national objective is not just to acquire, not just demolish, not just prepare the site, it's actually get a house built and occupied. So when you say you're doing low moderate income housing, the end test for meeting your broad national objective is occupancy. In this case, there were a number of lots that were purchased in Craddock, did not meet the broad national objective, hit the deadline, and had not complied, and the city council may recall, the city paid back HUD approximately $250,000 out of non-federal funds to pay HUD back for not meeting the broad national objective. So there's sometimes a penalty, classes are penalty. That was the penalty phase, that was done, I think it was approximately 2014 perhaps. Those lots remain in the inventory at PRHA, and they have, they're unrestricted because the fact the city paid back the CDBG money back to HUD. Those lots are in PRHA's hands, do with whatever they would like.
Yeah, I see eight lots there that are left remaining. How many were originally purchased and how many were converted and filled with housing?
None actually ever had a house.
Nine. Really?
Yeah. And there were a couple of the lots were converted, were merged, so the lot numbers may seem different, it's how they match up. There were a couple of subdivisions were done merging smaller lots into larger lots. So there's, over the time, there's a little bit of variance in total numbers. Yeah, but there were no houses.
Mr. Jacobson.
I don't see any indication about the lots that PRHA owns in Brighton. Do you know where they fall?
If you're going to go through this.
Oh, then we'll get to that. Okay.
If you don't see anything in here, they may own lots in Brighton, but they would not have been CDBG purchased.
Okay.
And remember, PRHA has other financial resources available to them that aren't CDBG. Today, we're focusing on these block grant acquisitions. So that was Craddock. The next one that's kind of interesting, the one's in Parkview, and if you drive through Parkview, you'll see PRHA signs, properties for sale. That was another kind of an interesting one. Went through the process back with HUD to get the broad national objective removed, and that has been cleared, so there's no broad national objective. However, the requirement to repay HUD remains. So if you sell those properties, you have to do the fair market value repayment to, up to HUD. So even though they were able to say, we're not going to meet the broad national objective, and HUD said, okay, that's fine, they didn't say it's fine to not pay them back. So those lots still have a fair market value that has to be paid. So anybody goes into Parkview, they don't have, it doesn't have to be for low moderate income housing, but whoever buys it, the fair market value of the lot has to go back to HUD, which comes back around to our CDBG program.
What's the timeframe?
So is that the overall general rule that the payback doesn't trigger until the land is transferred?
Yeah, that's normally the case. If you, well, we'll talk a little bit about what the HUD expectations are. Normally, the payback happens at the point of sale.
Even though the broad, like for these properties, you said.
Well, in this case, HUD said, we know you're not meeting a broad national objective, but we're not going to require you. But they don't always have to do that. I'm just giving, there's a one-off kind of an agreement that HUD did. Partly, I think, because it's in a historic district, there's some challenges in there, but yeah, this is not, the normal thing isn't to let you just carry, and that's one of the reasons we're looking at this today. We've got a lot of properties that have carried for decades, and at some point, you know, you need to make some decisions what you're going to do. And so, and then there's a series of maps, and I'm not going to go through all the different.
Are these vacant lots in Parkview?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll mention this again, on the residential side, I think there's some discussion we had about what's a better way to market. PRHA, as far as we've seen up to this point, has bundled them up, tried to find somebody to take all of them. And, you know, it's very difficult working in a historic district, number one, to get new housing approved. That's a lot for somebody to take on to start owing taxes on and going through all those proposals. So I think there might need to be some different strategies. Same thing in Craddock. I think, you know, there needs to be a little bit of different marketing strategy to get these properties moving. I know in the PRHA list that they're working, and we have not gone through all their review yet, but they were intending to keep the bulk, not all of the bulk of the residential lots, including these. So we just mentioned those. So these are residential, and really the maps are in there more for your, you know, help you understand kind of where they are. You can see the Craddock lots.
If you could hold up just a moment, Mr. Baldwin. If we look at, and I think I've counted, there are 15 vacant lots in that Parkview area. And if you go back in that area, some of these lots are actually, have a water view. So, I mean, the signs on the lots have faded, being they've been up there 15, 20 years. So you can't read what's on the sign. However, with this kind of property, and people are building infield homes, infield, all over our city, it's interesting why these that are, and Craddock historic area, I don't know if it's, you think it's the historic piece that made?
I think in Parkview, I think, well, number one, I think it's the cause of somebody taking the whole bundle of lots. And I think, well, we have, most of our infield builders in Portsmouth, they're building ones and twos, they don't build 10.
Right.
And it's a lot, that's a lot to take on to hold 10 lots, and you don't know how the market is. Of course, coming out of recession, market's been slow. We do see a lot, and I'm sure the city assessor can tell you, we have a lot of infield developers working out there. We think your better strategy would be ones and twos as opposed to here, take 12 or 14.
They're not expensive.
But those are very nice lots. Now, a few of them get down where it gets pretty low, we'd have some questions about being down in the flood zone.
Right.
Might not be the best place to be, or we're going to certainly have to meet the requirements being in a flood area.
And they're marketing those properties themselves instead of aligning with the realty?
They pretty much.
Yeah, I think they went out with an RFP the last time, is what I think they did.
I have a question. Are you familiar with those lots off Portsmouth Boulevard, near where the old Wayside Cleaners was, but on the other side? Because someone built five infield houses right there. I mean, they look very nice, but who, was that PRHA property or private?
Most of it's private.
That was private?
Most of it is private. We've got infield developers out there, pretty active. The council doesn't like a lot of it, but.
They look pretty good.
But they're pretty active, as you'll see this.
You have it listed as Area 5, Area 4.
It just matches up the map.
Okay, so those properties do not have to be purchased altogether?
No. No, no, that's, we just block those because those lots are in close proximity to each other. Rather than giving you, you know, 50 maps, we tried to give you, you know, some of you could get a sense. So you can see in Craddock, you know, you can see the block of those in Craddock, we didn't want to give you, you know, 10 different maps.
So each one of these properties have individual amounts associated with them CDBG.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're individual lots. And those are the Parkview lots. You see those a couple down by Harold Street down there, a little bit concerned, they get kind of low down there.
To pick up on Dr. Wicker's question, same street for Parkview, you can buy one or do you have to buy all?
In theory, you should be able to buy one. PRHA owns it, but yes, you should be able to walk in and say, I'd like that corner lot, I'll take that one.
So why do you say in theory?
Well, because PRHA holds the property, they've been trying to sell them as a block. I always say in theory because, yes, they could sell one at a time.
It's just a marketing decision on their part.
Exactly. And so that's something you've worked out. We're just pointing out, up to this point, they've tried to market them as a block of lots. In fact, when Dan Astham was working there, he had kind of a sole relationship with them as well on the lots. So there's no restriction under city or CDBG that would require that, as long as they need minimum lot size requirements and they're through the historic preservation.
How long have they been vacant?
These have been vacant, I'm saying at least 20, 30 years.
25, 30 years.
I know, we were working back there 12, 15 years ago, and they were, we actually did some re-subdivision of some of those lots back in the early 2000s to create, you know, a little bit larger lots. In some cases, when Mr. Astham was working on them, he had a couple he wanted to reorient it towards the water. And they were re-subdivided. That's back probably 2003 or '04, maybe? '05, somewhere in that, somewhere in that timeframe.
I have a question. In Parkview, I mean, how are some of these parcels CDBG and then look like, were they all, at one point, all under the PRHA ownership or CDBG availability, or?
All the.
Does it look like some right things too?
Well, over the years, here at you went and bought a combination of things. They bought up dilapidated housing, which over the time was torn down, so that's why you have a lot of vacant lots. There was, housing was lost. They bought, they bought properties in there that have since been renovated. So a number of those were renovated, but they were mostly using CDBG funds for all their acquisitions in Parkview. The next piece, and this is really some where Robert may want to speak more to this, this is the part I think the EDA would be more interested in. This is the part that we've indicated should come to the city, and I'm using the global city for that. These are non-residential vacant parcels. We've identified 39. Again, they're mapped out in 12 different areas. It takes up about nine areas. And these are the parcels that were looked at by the economic development department and said there was development potential, and that they would like to have these transferred over to the city from PRHA so they could be used for EDA for development purposes.
As a point of reference, geographic reference, is the 1020 the old oasis?
Yes. Yes. And a couple of years ago, they did the demolition of that site.
So, Mr. Baldwin, the properties owned by PRHA, PRHA pays taxes on those.
I don't believe they do.
I thought in their, in their courts, they give a real estate.
Yeah, their tax exemption.
On their public, on their.
On all these properties.
On their other properties.
On these properties. I don't know, let me, I can, I can.
Because they, I thought they do pay taxes.
Yeah.
They make a payment in lieu of taxes.
Was that based on?
Stand up and talk. Mr. Millen.
For the, for the traditional public housing projects, PRHA makes a payment in lieu of taxes based on a HUD formula, HUD standard formula for that. Then there are other affordable developments that were constructed with low-income housing tax credits, and those are generally full real estate tax. But PRHA does, Mr. Baldwin was correct, PRHA does not pay taxes on properties held for redevelopment.
I have a question. What is the process to have the lots transferred from PRHA to the city?
I'm going to, Robert's being that, when we've done this in the past, the PRHA board votes to transfer the property over, and I believe the economic development authority has to accept. That's how that's worked. So, yes, that is.
Members of council and commissioners, for fluidity. I know we've got a lot of questions.
We will have that.
And Mr. Baldwin's presentation covers a lot of ground, if we can. Certainly, there's a method of transferring, and I'm going to use Ms. Currie's language. We're going to handle the mechanics of it, and we can certainly, I want to make sure you all get the discussion. But I, we're trying to preserve your time to discuss strategically where you want to go, as opposed to can we get the property. We certainly have that discussion at whatever level. But I understand, and Mr. Baldwin has to meet, but I appreciate your questions, and we'll get you that answer back as soon as possible. But yes, we can get it, and we have done it before.
Were we asking just a whole question?
Well, you can write your questions, yes.
I'm just asking that the procedure.
On this part.
The whole question.
Yeah, I just, quickly walk through the maps. You have them in your, in your information. Some are small lots, some are larger parcels. Again, these things have been accumulated over time. We tried to determine, working with the economic development team over there, you know, what they believed they had, could find a use or developer for. And this last piece I'm going to get into, this is the, and again, I think the question of the residential properties, one, there's going to need to be some discussion. As you know, the city really doesn't have a residential development wing, you know. It hasn't typically been something that the economic development authority, everybody else does. But there's a number of parcels we identified as vacant. Most of these, again, have been vacant for a long time, and we were at least toying around or suggesting the idea that maybe somebody should come over to the city itself to find a mechanism for marketing and try to get these properties. Again, our, our thinking on this is twofold. Number one, nobody wants to maintain them. And number two, we should be getting some, you know, positive use and taxes out of them. So we need to be aggressive in trying to move these properties off of this list. And some of that has come down, but I think there needs to be a much more concerted effort on how to do that. So we were suggesting some of the things where the city might take on a few of these things to try to, to move them along. But that's a, that's an open-ended process discussion as well.
But again, these are properties that were acquired with.
CDBG.
By PRHA.
Everything on here.
And they're all over. You can see, and they're kind of all over. I think people see these lots up here in London and Washington. If you purchase one, there's a sign, I think it's still out there on that. Some of them were kind of unusual. And one of the things we've been, we did work with the PRHA staff. We've all been having, go back, like, can you find why you bought certain things? Because some of the properties we found are in locations. It's just not clear what the purpose was. Might have been just a slum and blight removal type of a targeted thing, and you ended up with a lot by itself in a neighborhood.
Bill Scott question.
Now, the city currently controls that list, right?
PRHA.
PRHA.
Okay.
All PRHAs. And we were just suggesting, this might be a point of discussion for later, whether some of these ought to come over to the city to try to move on. Whether it's the city or PRHA, there needs to be a more, we just think, there just needs to be a more concerted strategy to try to move these things. We've identified lots we believe have development potential. We should try to get them off of the, and I'll just mention this too. The question comes up on occasion, but what's the city's risk dealing with HUD? Now, all these lots we're showing you have not met their broad national objective for the most part, or we could not identify what it was. In that case, generally speaking, you're in pretty good shape unless you get audited, and they come down and say, prove to us what you're doing here. And if you, for example, bought this piece of property for low moderate income housing, and it's vacant, and you failed to meet your broad national objective, and HUD is well within their rights to ask you to pay them back. So, I always tell you, the risk is low until they come knocking on your door, and then you don't know what they do when they, if they audit. I believe Norfolk has been audited recently.
Yes, Dr. Pat.
Yes. Mr. Baldwin, which is the piece of property that you called to my attention? It's probably one of our oldest communities, which.
We have a piece that was in the backside of.
I've asked it a thousand times over 30 years, but I didn't know that back off, it's off of Twin Pines Road. What is the area called?
Well, it's called Twin, the neighborhood of Twin, it's called the neighborhood of Twin Pines.
The neighborhood of Twin Pines, which is a very small community.
These lots on Gibson Street are identified on the residential pieces as Area 3.
We were trying to figure out why.
Back here.
Or how did.
If you've never been in the back of that neighborhood, you kind of lost back there. It's a very old neighborhood.
Who were the owners of those properties?
The PRHA owns them now. I don't know at the time they purchased them.
Are they vacant or do they have houses?
Best we can tell, they're vacant. It's very, to get back there, it's hard to find. It's not like a normal subdivision lotting pattern. So these lines look pretty good on paper. It doesn't look quite as good on the ground as far as where those things are. But, you know, we're just speculating. We think there probably was a dilapidated house back in there. The neighborhood asked the city or at PRHA or someone to come and take out.
I don't know. It might be a pattern who the previous owners were, that maybe.
And I'm sure that's something that can be determined.
You know, that's not designated as a historic community, but it is.
It is.
It is. This is the oldest.
It goes back, I think, to the late 1700s.
That's what Mr. Baldwin told me, and I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's an interesting neighborhood to go back in there. So the normal, you know, modern subdivision land doesn't apply there. And so it's hard to find exactly where the lots are. But you can see it's open. You go back there, it's open back in there. Interesting, interesting, interesting history of the neighborhood back there.
It doesn't have road access, though, does it?
It gets close.
Hold on, Mr..
You know, my, my deal is, instead of, obviously, PRHA trying to market these hasn't worked well. And if they come over to the city, instead of throwing them to a realtor, maybe the one that we contracted with, why in the world wouldn't we set a price and auction, have an auction? And at an auction, you don't have to sell if it doesn't meet your criteria. But it seems like to me that would, that would facilitate getting them on the tax rolls quicker than throwing them out to a realtor that probably, that would be low priority anyway. Just a thought.
Yeah. And if I don't, just to piggyback, I'm looking at that 933 Mount Vernon. I don't see much use out of that. Maybe you could just gift that to one of the owners next to it and re-subdivide it or something, and they eventually pay taxes on whatever lands there.
If you look at these ones that are, this is on our undevelopable list.
Don, just had a question.
I'm sorry, I don't have a question. I just kind of wonder, for the sake of moving this thing forward, I think we've got a lot of great ideas on what to do with it. Once we determine at the bulk what we want to do, maybe that's something that can be, EDA can discuss on best way of taking all of these ideas into account at the time. I think that's probably the better way to.
I appreciate it. Because that's what I was trying to.
Kind of get an idea of what's in our inventory.
These four, these four here are on the undevelopable list. These are not, these are parcels, but they are determined to be not developable. And so, that, these, one of the things you could do as an example is pay back HUD, whatever the fair market value might be for undevelopable parcels. And I don't know what that is. I'm not getting all the details of that. And kind of clean the books of it. The property could still be there. Someone still is responsible for maintaining it. So, that's pretty much the run-through on the CDBG parcels. I think you've already asked a number of questions already. But that was our, again, you know, our initial scan, looking through what's still on the books. And again, it's come down, it was over 100, I think it was something like 113 or something when we started this exercise. We're down in the, really in the upper 60s if you take out the Craddock and the Parkview lots. But you're certainly below 100.
Well, we had a lot of questions. Can you recap Suzanne Bucka Park, and who's going to do talk?
Yeah, while we're here, if we're not talking about it.
I have. Well, you know, we've, a lot of the recent, this recent parking lot was, you know, we started out with, how do you begin to move these, to classify, categorize these undeveloped parcels into tiers? You know, so add, connected with that was, you know, then what do you do with, you know, undeveloped land, or, you know, or even possibly residential sites? Is that appropriate for tiers? But the first kind of cut of this is how do you, how do you tier these current properties? We've had a discussion on the mechanism of property transfers that we put in the parking lot, that we've done in the past between and among entities. You know, and now we've got, we've had some conversation about, you know, when we, when we acquire, you know, how do you acquire, and, you know, we being the city, that, again, it's that question of the movement among and between entities. Then, you know, how do you market? I think your strategic issues is that, how do you transfer properties between and among entities? And, you know, then how do you, as in a comprehensive way, take more aggressive action on vacant properties that were purchased through CDBG? You know, so you have a concerted strategy that, that moves that forward.
On the, no one may know the answer. On the vacant residential properties, do we know if the housing authority wants to convey that property to us?
We have a list that they have provided. We are just now going through. We can certainly get their, their recommendations back to you. It's kind of a mixed, many of the residential properties, like the Craddock, Parkview, I know they've indicated they would retain. Some of the others are kind of mixed as to which ones, and we haven't gone through enough to know specifically why they would have some. They've kept, I think one of their, one of their general thoughts, is what I mentioned earlier, was that since the city has never had really a residential development arm, we've always, you know, relied on the PRHA for that. They would, you know, keep the residential lots and continue to deal with those if that was, you know, what the ultimate decision was made. But I think it wasn't all of them. And there's, I can mention too, on some of those, like the parcels that were, that were, that I showed in the very beginning, that were attached to some of their projects and went through the, there's a few of those they would like to transfer back over to someone and not, and not keep as well. So we are just now getting into looking at their list and kind of comparing back to what we've done in our initial scan through.
I thought a major concern was that if it comes back to the city, the city would have to maintain the property. It brings a cost to the city.
Right. I think that, that is exactly, whoever owns them, owns them.
So I thought it was a two-pronged approach. Let PRHA maintain, but the city change the marketing strategy.
I'm not going to speak for PRHA, but I think their, their normal thing is they don't want to be paying to maintain the properties.
Do you have a situation?
No.
Okay. And I know as a liaison to PRHA, they have identified a three-page document, one that they want to keep, and it has all of the properties listed, one that they want to convey to the city to maintain, and one that they have classified as, like you said, undevelopable, that they want to try to auction off. So, I don't know if they've provided that, a copy of that list to you. I could give it to Deborah, have her scan it and share it with everyone, just so they can see.
But we're going, as Mr. Baldwin indicated, we have been communicating with their, our team has been meeting with the team that they've put together, looking at the properties. So their team and the city's team, as we have presented this, will come back together. And I guess there are two parts here, and I guess this is the question. There is properties that you see acquired through CDBG that are development, development properties that we have identified. Then there are properties that are residential properties. And so the question is, where does the, where should the residential properties lie? Economic development nor the EDA deals with that. And where should the development properties lie? For companies, you know, that kind of thing. So that's, I think that's the two-pronged question with the properties that we have.
Just talking out loud, council's concerned about the acquisition of large lots and being subdivided, and infill housing being done. What I saw today were some lots that would seem to me to be ideal for that type of construction. And the question is, what's, what's keeping it from happening?
Yes.
Is it the CBDG hurdle? Or just, just what is it? And what can we do as a community to, to move forward?
That's the discussion.
And maybe Bill's idea is. I think that's the, and we won't decide that today, but I think that's one of the ideas that we need to look at, is an auction. Once we set the criteria, you know, if it doesn't meet the criteria at the auction, you retain ownership. But even before that, as I understand it, there's some HUD potential liability, whether the properties remain with PRHA or they transition to us. I think it'd be a good idea to know what that potential exposure is.
Well, that's going to help set your minimum.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Well, the bottom line is, you know, the, the fair market value is what you owe back if we sell. So if you, if the fair market value was 20.
So it doesn't really matter.
You auction it for $100, you owe back $19.9. I mean, that's kind of how it works. Now, one thing we would suggest, and we'll use those Parkview lots as an example, the city assessment of those lots is fairly high. We think that might also be an issue. And we would recommend, for example, someone to go in to do a few targeted appraisals to see if the actual market value is below where they've been assessed, to see if that's the issue.
Barry, did you have a question?
Oh, no.
No, just because under CDBG, you could go either way, an appraisal or a city assessment. So, if that, you know, just one other thing to take a look at. You asked a question. We have the same questions, like, why haven't these things moved? And that might be one of those other issues as well. CDBG restrictions, if someone wanted to develop and didn't want to develop for a low to moderate income buyer, or they can't find a buyer, that could also be, you know, in play as well.
Oh, that's true.
So there's a number of, each lot's kind of got its own story.
We definitely need to know what the, the value of the property is, and you could only do that through appraisal.
Appraisals on.
I think that would be 70%.
And I think that would fit back into our overarching policy that Robert talked about around cost benefit analysis as well. Get us back where we need to be able to get that information.
So it sounds as though you've begun to kind of develop this strategy.
It's a strategy.
One being, the first is, how do you make the decision about which properties to transfer and where? You know, and that that might look different, you know, depending on whether it's a development property or a residential property. That's further, just, the water is further muddied just by the CDBG status. Then the second, accompany that, is to identify the barriers to residential development. Why have not, you know, properties been developed? And then thirdly, once you've figured that out, is to then kind of determine that return on investment, that cost benefit strategy. So, so that you've got this kind of process that you're beginning to develop that you would use as, as you continue this conversation.
And Robert, if you get that information, can we find out not only what it will cost us right now, but what have we lost in opportunity? What have we been spending on maintenance?
You don't want to go.
I know you want to hear that, because that may change people's disposition about so-called giving away property. The longer you're giving away property, that's, that may be the best use for it, and you get it on the tax rolls. If it's been off the tax rolls for 20 years.
Exactly.
You've lost 20 years worth of tax revenue. We need to know that.
Absolutely.
Or 30 years.
Even in our financials, when you look at all the properties we hold with the EDA, when you look at the acquisition costs, we amortize out all the lawn maintenance, all the stormwater fees we pay. And you look at a piece of property, and you think, how do we have so much in it? We sat on it for a long time. And the EDA and the PPIC are no strangers to taking on residential property. And when I was on the PPIC, we acquired a lot of Sugar Hill.
Sugar Hill.
Still trying to pick it up. And it's, you got all these sporadic properties all there. Later to come to find out, you really can't develop anything back there because of the flood plain and the way the utilities are run. So you got all these properties you're sitting on. You can't do a lot with it, but you are paying stormwater fees, maintenance on it. Same with Frederick Boulevard. We took all those down, created a berm, took us five, six, seven years to, just to level them down and tear them down. But it's something that we can do. So it's not something we don't, we're not equipped to do it. It's just, do you want to take on lawn maintenance and stuff like that? And you can kind of figure that out. A lot of these properties aren't, but so big, so.
Yes, near and to all. At one point, we were going to have a joint retreat, including PRHA, and I do believe in EDA and council at one point. I believe there's benefit to do that. I would certainly, you know, welcome seeing PRHA come over here to City Hall for a meeting with city council and EDA, because I think there are some things, you know, I hear us talking about your presentation, and at the bottom line, end of the day, PRHA has a lot of the answers too, you know. So, I know you all had talked about that at one point, doing that.
In fact, today was to be that meeting.
Oh, okay.
But given the fact that the cost of our first item, that we had to go close.
The logistics, yeah, okay, yeah. But maybe in the future.
Yes.
That we can get PRHA's board over here to City Hall.
I, I know this conversation is specifically regarding CDBG land and property that PRHA currently owns, but are there other properties that would be better suited of PRHA's that would be to come to the city? What, I mean, what is their entire inventory, instead of just this inventory? Or is this their entire inventory?
That is not, the list they have, and I mentioned that when I first started speaking, they have properties acquired with other funding sources, that we, you know, we don't have any, some of we don't even know what the funding source is. It's, you know, a PRHA program we weren't aware of. And we haven't gone into any detail. So there's a number of those properties they've actually, you know, gone over. And they have another, other properties they have, which are their properties. They've always had, for example, it might have been part of a public housing project that got rebuilt. That's always been their land. So it would not have been actually acquired for some other purpose. It would have been, you know, part of their existing land holdings. And they have some of that as well. And that's not, all of that's not showing on the list. We've seen stuff like that, they did not put on the list. They mostly put in properties they've acquired, acquisitions. And we'll go back through that list and see, because there are, there are other properties on there as well, that I think that PRHA, again, this question about maintenance and all that, they would like to transfer to another entity if they could. That's on another list.
Yeah, that's where, when I asked that question about Brighton, there are a lot of properties out there that's under a pseudonym name on the PRHA. I want to say PRHA Land Company, but I don't think the PRHA is showing in it. But there are definitely properties out in Brighton, a lot of properties at PRHA. But there are definitely properties out in Brighton, a lot of properties that PRHA owns. You know, so that's why I posed the question.
What other questions do we have for Bob?
Thank you.
Gabrielle, what are the logistics for lunch?
Lunch is here. We have box lunches for everyone, so you can just grab a box, come back in. You may want to take about 15 or so minutes to eat lunch. But you can do it right here at the chair.
Oh, your wife got control of the nine-year-old, don't even try to get out of it.
You have a nine-year-old? Let's come back to continue this conversation as related to kind of some alignment of priorities and vision.
Tell them we're going to take roll.
Sure. I just suggest that we have a working lunch, just go get the box, just come by, two clothes.
Use the bathroom if you've got to use the bathroom.
Let's take 10 minutes to get the lunch, and then we'll work over the lunch, okay?
He's talking about a nine-year-old.
It is there.
All right, we're going to have a working lunch, and we'll start. Dr. Patton, next.
Yes.
We apologize in advance to people who are listening.
All right, our next discussion, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Economic Development Commission, will be the alignment of development functions. And our facilitator will be a part of it. And Mr. Moore will begin the introduction of the session. And we'll put back up the frame at the end, where we have city council, city manager, economic development, and the layout of these development entities that relate to us moving properties forward within the city.
So the next two presentations and discussions directly relate to these strategic issues that you've identified. One is to how to make the decision about where the property most appropriately belongs, how to transfer property, how to acquire property. And so that will be, you know, a conversation of this alignment of development functions. Once we have had that conversation, then we'll move into a conversation of some mechanisms for effective property development. You know, one of those mechanisms is land banking. And so we'll use land banking as an example of, you know, how you convert all this conversation, you know, into action. So, Mr. Moore, did I give you enough time to have a debate?
And it's a very, it's only one frame.
This was the whole not being on camera situation. Thank you, by the way. I apologize. Certainly, I think what we're looking at, when you take all of these things and put them together, everything we've spoken about this morning, since afternoon now, everything we've spoken about has been based off of economic development, the planning procedures behind economic development, Mr. Baldwin, and where do we go from here? Again, in economic development, we're all about structure and kind of placement and tiers. So what we're looking at is, from a development category standpoint, and Mr. Baldwin touched on it just a little while ago, there's economic development, there's, so there's something that's, you know, whether it's retail or commercial, industrial, something that drives jobs and investments and taxes. Then there's residential development, the housing aspect, and then you have the institutional slash public development. Again, those are going to be those properties that potentially the city should still own, because in some way, shape, or form, there's a way that it could be utilized. As we talk about the Crawford Gateway revitalization plan, and how those facilities are utilized, how those facilities, you know, if new facilities were to come online, where would they be? You know, what would it entail, things of that nature? So that's really where we see things. And that's kind of the lead into the discussion that we want to have now is, you know, as far as the alignment, going back to the, one of the previous slides, and, you know, city council, then city manager, then economic development, and then the kind of subgroups that you see. Where does everything that we are doing at this point, where should it be housed? Where should it be, who should be in charge? Whose responsibility is it going forward?
Okay. Thank you. So, so your thoughts? We've had some spirited discussion, you know, about some of the residential development. We have had discussion about tiering for economic development.
We're going to move you over in the center. No, not so much. If you move over that way, someone will move her flip chart so that she can.
That's okay, well, I'll go back and forth.
She needs her flip chart, put it over there. He's going to bring your flip chart.
Oh, thank you. Here we go. Don't, don't look at the light, blind, it's like the eclipse.
Forget the other one.
No, I'm good, it's good, thanks.
Okay. Oh, man.
I was telling Mr. Moore to cut that out, but if you're fine, move where it is.
Okay, right. So I always worry when you raise your hand, Mr. Ash, because I think I'm going down that slippery slope of, you know.
Rattling wrappers.
No, I think we can leave this, I think it's good. Because this grounds us, you know, it gives us some focus and function. So tell us, tell us your thoughts, you know, I mean, you know, we've got the, let's talk about economic development, because that's you guys. So, you know, so let's talk about the kind of control over, you know, what appears to be the most logical assignment of, you know, alignment of functions. Mr. Murray, are you?
Well, I think, first of all, we need to be grounded in exactly what the process would be to transfer the properties.
The process of how you align, take a look at the categories as a whole?
Yes.
And how you, how you do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Which entity they should reside with and.
And what entity they're residing with now?
And how the process would be.
Mayor, to facilitate this discussion, let me offer up a couple of recent examples. Let's talk about 609 615 Church, which is not a property held by anyone initially, but a property that became available. We could also talk about, as examples, I want to say there were some properties in the London, the auction, the auction we did last year, where we purchased properties. So these are not simply properties that are held by one of the three entities that may need to move around, but opportunities that have arisen over the last year or so, where all of these issues become, I would say, they come to the forefront, and we're trying to decide what, what do we do, or what's the best method of addressing those. And I don't have, I can't recall with clarity the detail on the auction. I'm going to ask Mr. Miller to add some detail to that for those of you who weren't here, how we got into the auction. Right.
Yeah, this, maybe a year and a half ago now, Hoderide's property up on High Street, the former bakery, across the street, which was a former car dealership, we're both going to auction. And so at that point, Mallory Butler was economic development department head. We met with Dr. Patton, talked to EDA's liaisons, and decided it would be advisable for EDA to go, go bid at that auction, talked with Dean Thomason, who was the chair at that time, and were able to acquire those two properties on High Street. But there was no process at that time to kind of quickly determine whether or not the city and EDA wanted to go ahead and make acquisitions like that.
So you have, and so I use that as example, you have opportunities that present themselves, and of course, we have those properties that are held by the various entities. Mr. Moore, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else. You scooted up, you scooted to the front of your chair, so I thought you wanted to weigh in.
I apologize again. I think that's a, that's a great discussion and leading, sorry, that's a great discussion and lead into what the next topic will be.
Land banking.
Which is going to be land banking. Certainly, as we put these tiers together, as we talk about the incentives, as we talk about who owns what property, what we really need to look at at the same time is, what opportunities have presented themselves before that we've taken advantage of, and what other opportunities are there potentially out there? Again, where we should maybe pull the trigger and do some things to facilitate, you know, investment and development? Or is it something that we should just gain control of? Because in the future, we may need to make sure that that is something that we can clearly designate and utilize, you know, going full. Certainly, the 1021 High Street and the former Evans Electric properties were properties that we were just speaking of, that were seen as opportunities. Those opportunities are still there. The question is now, going forward, when you see these types of opportunities, instead of having that knee-jerk reaction, not saying that that's what that was, but instead of just acquiring to acquire, let's have a reason to do that. Let's look at it from a tiered approach, let's look at it from a strategic approach. And then to tie it into this here, not to take away from the facilitator's role, but really look at where should these things be, how should this, how should that process take place? You know, it's been spoken of before in previous meetings, where the discussion was, should economic development be, for autism purposes, the clearinghouse for all of these, these things? At the risk of taking on all of that, yes. But ultimately, we, economic development needs to be a part of the discussion. And that's, that's just, I think goes without saying.
Well, to your point, Robert, to acquire something and land bank it without having any vision on what you want there is doing a disservice to, I think, a citizen. I mean, to look at the properties that, and this is not an indictment on any particular entity, but we've got way too many properties that have been sitting vacant off the tax rolls for 20-plus years.
Certainly.
And we got to acknowledge that that's a problem, that then, as we're discussing today, what's the best way to deal with it? I think that's where we need to come to a meeting of minds, to see what we're going to do differently than what we've been doing in the past.
Sure.
I mean, I think purposes of just broadening our discussion, if this is the appropriate point which we, you know, develop that, or develop concepts in general, I think, whenever you travel, there's always an objective in mind. I think that when we approach this, maybe we should use the same concept. What is it that Portsmouth, what is it that we are actually attempting to do? How do we want to be identified? What is our overall objective? When we talk about land bank, when we talk about acquisitions, acceptance of development projects, et cetera, et cetera, there's always a direction. Say like in the case of Virginia Beach, you might could say that that city sort of leans towards resort. You know, what is it that Portsmouth wants to be identified as? I know we are an industrial, light industrial, shipping waterfront, historic, but is there something that we want to do? Is there something we want to be? Is there some way we want to be seen? I think we could begin to use that type of a discussion and conversation to sort of create that end point for us. And then we can work towards it with all of this development conversation. What do we want to be?
So there are two things that need going on here. Good points, and sorry, I'm going to jump on now. Well, you know, one, I mean, the goal of this conversation is, two, I mean, how do you, how do you make sure that you're getting the best and highest use of the land, and as quickly and as effectively as possible? So one is, you know, what is the strategy screen, for lack of a better term, that you use to determine how to act on new opportunities? So you've got two concurrent things here happening. You've got new opportunities, and you've got stuff that's already here, that you can go through this process and figure out whether it's in the right place or not. But as you look at new opportunities, how do you screen those opportunities to make sure that, that you are achieving, that these will be used to achieve Portsmouth as a prosperous port city, a lifelong learning city, a safe and friendly city?
Right.
And to the extent that they tie in with the four big things, this will advance education, this will improve our image, this will help make us a smart city, and this is part of the Crawford Gateway revitalization, then that's kind of your first cut at that screen in many ways.
Yeah, just to bring up, we were discussing, and a lot of these, you know, properties we're seeing, some are city-owned, and some we look at PRHA-owned. You know, when we look at them separately, I think it would be nice to come up with a comprehensive list, saying, these are the available properties in the city, and to decide, you can say city, PRHA, whatever. And I don't know if we should do it by type of property or geographic location. So that way, you know, I'm not looking at this list, well, PRHA has something in this area, oh, the city has something, but next thing you notice, they're touching each other. So I think it would be nice to have a whole list, these are the available properties we have in this city, you know, whether technically the sale would go through PRHA, EDA, the city, whatever. But instead of having them coming at you from three different directions, I'd like to just be able to look and see all of the available properties at one time.
Well, imagine if you're Mr. ABM, thinking of coming to have a world, you know, he talked it.
I guess, with they not being new, we had the same question. I was saying, create an inventory list and actually list what it's zoned for, so we know, you know, how to list that as well. And then state how long the property has been vacant, or, you know, how many years that it's been off the tax rolls.
And why not include an appraised price?
I think we, we have that. I've got them at home. I can bring them to you if you want them. We've got them all together.
But what I hear is an integrated list. So let's update that list for everybody.
Integrated list.
Which will be the property, its location, its size, zoning, any encumbrances such as PRHA, I mean, CBDG, or floodplain.
And pricing.
I think I have that, actually. All the parties together.
Yes. Would it be wise for us, maybe, as a joint effort, to get an actual physical appraisal done, not just assessment, at that time too? And have that all kind of put together? Because maybe the appraised value may be significantly different than the assessed value, or likewise.
I can't imagine, many of those properties that have been vacant so long have been appraised recently. So there's no answer to that. Why would they be appraised?
Well, if the city assessed value, if we feel that we need to target certain properties for a special appraisal, we can do that. Otherwise, we're going to have a big, big expense.
Right. So let's carry on with that. So we get this integrated, comprehensive list that shows all the properties that are available, defined as properties that are now held by somebody. Because there's no way to know what's in the open market, obviously. And we'll have a set of, you know, kind of a template that says it should be size and zoning and all those criteria. You get that integrated list, and then my question is, then why?
Well, let's go to Mel first.
You know, a list is fine. We probably have more of this.
We do.
Carter has liver pills, as my mama used to say. But even prior to the list, I think we have to decide who's going to take the lead on economic development. Right now, I think we've got too many chefs in the kitchen. And when everybody's in charge, nobody's in charge. And I think when you go to Virginia Beach, or even to Norfolk, you're not dealing with umpteen entities when it comes to land, whether it's residential or commercial. And I think we have to decide who's going to take the lead in it. And before that's determined, I think all the lists in the world's not going to probably help us a whole lot.
So let me get Mr. Clark, and I'll come back to Ms. Link.
And if nothing else, when we generate that list, we don't have to put everything on it, but if we could put it on, even if it's on the city website. Because these pieces of land are available, but if people don't have a way to know they're available, because you could put them up there one day and might have offers on. available, because you could put them up there one day and might have offers on two or three of them the next day. Just if there's no good way for possible buyers to know what's available. And, you know, I agree with what Bill's saying, you know, the economic side of it should definitely go through our economic development department, there's no doubt about it. But there's a lot of residential properties in there that maybe if people knew they were open and available, we might sell them.
Well, I, I actually, just to kind of maybe get the ball rolling, economic development is specifically for business development in our community. And so to me, any commercial property, whether it's PRHA-owned or whatever, ultimately, it's the city's property. Let's move it all under the wheelhouse of economic development and let PRHA, which the H stands for housing, let them deal with the residential side of it. And, and kind of, that way, especially with a commercial buyer coming into this community, looking at a piece of property, they don't want to say, oh, here's a list from the Economic Development Office, but the actual owner's PRHA, so you need to go up to Frederick Boulevard and talk to them. Let's put it all in one wheelhouse. Because the minute you start sending business owners every which way, they say, oh, but Norfolk's right there. So I think that that would be the catalyst, is there's housing in their name. PRHA does housing, and they would do it better than an Economic Development Authority can do it. Vice versa with the commercial properties. So as a first cut, as a kind of straw man, you know, that economic development, institutional public development, would be under the umbrella of economic development? And residential, at least again, as a first cut, would, would live with PRHA? And that might, there's, you know, there's nuances to all that, as a first cut. My question is, help me clarify when you talk about economic development. Because for me, I mean, is that, is that Department of Economic Development? Is that the EDA? Help me understand what you mean by that. Well, the EDA is the, basically, the arm of economic development that allows for the negotiation of properties and things on behalf of the city. So to me, when you're moving commercial properties, we know they're zoned commercial. And so let's, and the city owns them, no matter what entity they're actually under. So let's move the commercial properties that we know are commercial and into the EDA. And then any residential property. And I understand that residential development could be a big giant developer moving in and buying 10 or 15 lots and saying, let's build a whole new neighborhood. But at the end of the day, we've just saw a list of them that that's not happening. It's the individual, single house builders that are coming in and buying lots. So leave that over with PRHA.
Well, doll for a double's advocate, I could argue that that can go to EDA. I mean, it's, we can point to properties after property that have been vacant for 20 and 30 years that hasn't moved. So if we're talking about marketing real estate dirt, I could advance an argument that that property needs to be transferred to EDA.
And I would agree with that argument. And to the economic development end, I mean, we all recently experienced a surprise at the 12th hour of a property where it was pretty much a done deal at the 12th hour, when, you know, the city wasn't even aware of it. EDA wasn't aware of it. So that's, that's the things we needed to correct. And I think by consolidating it with EDA, that would eliminate that.
When you talk about economic development, you have to talk about the Department of Economic Development that is under city government. Because the Director of Economic Development traditionally has always been the lead in marketing and recruiting and retaining companies in the city. And we're all part of the same body, but Economic Development Authority commissions are pointed. But our purpose is to be supportive of the economic development initiatives through the city of Portsmouth. And in those cases, be able to expedite the marketing of properties, the acquisition of properties. But there is a reason that the Director of Economic Development is also the Secretary to the EDA Board. Because, and also the Secretary to the PPIC Board. Traditionally, when you're going to market, recruit companies, as an EDA authority, we're going to rely on the staff coming out of Department of Economic Development. Because that has traditionally been the recruitment arm, the retention arm for any city. And the authority commissions are there to support those initiatives and to encourage the development of properties and the retaining of the companies. So we're there, in essence, in an advisory capacity, but because of the type of experience we bring to the table, we are going to be there to be a catalyst to encourage the Director of Development, so that his vision, the vision for the city, can be expedited and realized. And so I just wanted to, you know, give clarity to that.
Right on, Miriam.
I mean, you know.
You just really put it in a nutshell.
Yeah, you know, because.
Summarized it well.
That's our Director of Development. Director of Economic Development for the City of Portsmouth. And he has a job to do. And his job, in my opinion, is to create opportunities to expand the City of Portsmouth' tax revenue base through commercial development, business development, and retention. They are all very important. And also, we need a national image out there. We had a national campaign at one time for advertising the City of Portsmouth, and we need to also revisit that. And there are things that the Economic Development Authority can do to assist in that monetarily. We can do that. You know, we want to help the City of Portsmouth, Department of Economic Development, to do whatever they need to do to bring prospects to this city. And to retain the companies that we have here. So those are just, you know, I weigh in on that.
Very good.
That was awesome, Phil. Yay, Miriam. So let me make sure that we, that I understand this, that, that the point of contact, the gatekeeper. The gatekeeper. How, whatever, you know, is the city, particularly the Department of.
Economic Development.
Economic Development. And, and I'm thinking that had that expectation, or that requirement sounds like a little strong word, but if that expectation had been adopted and in play, the circumstance that Mr. Mooney just spoke of, would, the chances of that happening would be minimized. The idea is that everything goes through one point of contact, one, you know, and that, so, and that the EDA specifically stands ready to help support what the department comes in and says that they need. I mean, this is, this ties back again to the conversation we had earlier about incentives, you know, about the connections, the relationships that you all represent around the table. And that, you know, and that bringing all that to bear, you know, then begins again to continue to support this. The city vision. Moves the vision forward in a really coordinated way. Dr. Platt?
Yeah, one of the things, and I share it with Mr. Wallin, I found, and it was like 1937 and 1938, I found, when I arrived here, one sheet that was a summary of the first meeting of the Public Housing Committee. That's what it started as. And in looking at that and realizing why that was started back in the 30s, to address, and it says on there, blight, try to provide better homes for people and things like that. When we moved from there to the Industrial Development Commission, or Corporation, as some cities called it. From there, cities developed economic development departments. And in our city, while we have had the, you know, we don't call this, your group, the Industrial Development Corporation anymore, you're the Economic Development Authority. But we never ever addressed this piece that was started in the 30s, that we didn't have anybody dealing with development. And, and so that's how the development arm and the public housing arm came under, under PRHA. But I don't think it's been any council who has ever, as we're doing today, looked at, okay, this is what we had, this was displaced, now we have economic development, and we have an economic development department. How do we move it, as Mrs. Jiggit so ably shared, into 21st century model? That's, that's what we are dealing with right here, today.
Eric, I think one way we can start is by taking assessment of the tools each one's had. We've been talking a lot about PRHA, and we've been talking a lot about the EDA, but you still have the PPICs, there's GPDC. At one point, these got together and collaborated. And I heard earlier that, when we, when we went to those auctions, it wasn't a knee jerk reaction, we actually, it was part of a strategic plan. There was a plan, and there were other partners out of those four that I mentioned, that all had property in that. That plan may have shifted, and plans change, but the PPI, PPIC has very different powers than the EDA. They want to put a toll up in front of your city hall, they can do it. EDA can't do that. PRHA can't do that. So getting an assessment of what each one can do, I think it also helps you determine what falls into what category. Or if there's a consolidation of some of these. I know at one point, the EDA and the PPIC were one authority, had the same body.
That's right.
That was broken out because, well, you wanted to have one to focus on the waterfront, so you bring in waterfront experts. And the way that the actual charter was developed, you had two different, terms had two different ages or time length, so they didn't, they didn't marry up. So that separated a delegation of powers. So I think, in my personal opinion, I think one way you start is to find out what tools each one has, what capacity can each one do. And that might be one way to drive which way goes. And also, you have planning and zoning changes. You might have something with residential one day, and it gets rezoned to industrial or mixed use. That changes who would then hospice over that at the time. So, that's all.
There's so many different conversations going on. I mean, and for fear sounding just totally disconnected. What exactly are we attempting to do with this slide? Economic development, residential development, institutional development, and this, this subheading of development categories? What is it that you're trying to achieve? What, what, what direction is this conversation supposed to be headed? Because we've got a lot of things going on here.
But I do, from a impartial objective, I think you're headed there. I think the objective, the goal is, is to take a look at development in its broadest sense in Portsmouth, including these three.
Umbrellas.
Kind of broad categories. And to make sure that whatever happens in those categories, again, I keep using this term, aligns with the vision, that it moves the vision forward. And, and so for this, for you all, I mean, part of the goal is to, you know, to make sure that the best use of property happens, that, that these properties that have been on the tax rolls languishing, you know, become vibrant, robust contributors to the tax roll. And that this is done effectively and efficiently, to, again, support this idea that, you know, that Portsmouth moves forward. And so one comes, this main conversation, and I think, when I hear you all, and I think your question is a reflection of that, is that much of this is fragmented now. And that it's not passing blame.
Right.
It's just how it evolved. You know, I mean, the history lesson and the, the double history lesson. You know, so how do you, you know, as stewards of Portsmouth's future, you know, how do you eliminate some of that fragmentation?
Right.
How do you make sure that, that whatever, right now, we're talking about the EDA, but any of these bodies that touches property, how do you make sure they're all working in the same direction? They're all talking to each other, they're all supporting the vision, you know, and that you all don't have surprises that, you know, that come up, that have been, you know, percolating for some reason. Mrs. Simmons, is that?
Yeah, that is a hand. I'm just sitting here thinking, completely unlike our neighbor cities, who have housing developments going up every week. You know, in, in my lifetime, literally, the only residential development in this city, exclusive of public housing, has been Newport and River Point.
River Point.
I mean, there's been very little residential development because we're the old urban city. It's all redevelopment. So now, all of a sudden, now we've got some property being redeveloped in Karaduk, and some redevelopment opportunities coming about. Well, kind of like Newport is exactly what that is, too. I don't think anybody has paid attention to residential development, because there wasn't any.
Right.
And there wasn't any land to have any on.
Right.
And so, until the commercial side of things, like, like in Newport, started selling off property and for redevelopment.
And, and to circle back, I submit to you all that this conversation becomes ever more critical, this idea of being clear about, you know, how you become effective and efficient. You know, with this, the gatekeeper.
Yeah, I'm real clear on the commercial side.
Yep, and best use and all that.
But residential's different.
As you move forward with the gateway, the, you know, the Crawford Parkway gateway, you know, that clarity is going to be much more important.
Bill?
Well, actually, and I don't know who was the lead, but we, we've had success when the, when the land was available in the last 20 years. Hidden Cove came online, that's, I don't know if y'all know where that is, that's off Twin Pines, large community, Bishop's Green, Sterling Cove, Lake Shores, which I'm certain was a redevelopment project from the old Twin Lakes project. So there have been a lot of successes in that arena, once again, either through redevelopment or through land that we had at that time. So it's not to knock anybody that, you know, some things haven't worked. I think it's more just a coordination and ultimately, who takes the lead in it. I think to Aaron's point, I think it would be good to see what unique abilities each of those entities has. I know PRHA has a lot under the federal and state umbrella that the EDA can't do, or the PPIC can't do. But we need to find out what they are and see if we can't make use of them. But ultimately, economic development, whatever it is, I think it's got to come through EDA.
And to piggyback off that, we might, we need to find a way to make property fluid going back and forth between, one thing you might have slated for residential may turn into be something commercial. Got to find an easy way to bring it over, something that we think is commercial that could be a better fit for residential, we got to find a way to be able to move it over there. So make it easy transfer, identify the, the tools and the powers each authority has, determine what should fall under each one, but then have, make it easy to be able to move them interchangeably across.
That's track.
That's track.
And let me also say, I don't see a bullet up there for the military, unless you're considering that under public institutional.
Institutional.
Yeah, because that's, that's a very vital partnership for us that is so important. And when you, anytime at the 5 o'clock hour, 4 o'clock hour, and you're near the shipyard, and you see all of those cars leaving our city, going to other cities, my thoughts are, we can find a way to capture those employees in the City of Portsmouth. And that becomes part of the strategic vision, too, under economic development. I mean, you can't talk about economic development without talking about adequate quality of life housing, you know.
That's a part of the residential development.
It's all together.
But, you know, I guess I'm, I'm just so, so confused about all of this conversation. Because I guess maybe I'm naive, but I always thought that the EDA, Economic Development Department, was an integral part of the Economic Development Authority. I thought y'all.
They are.
They are.
But it sounds like we're saying there's some, been some kind of disconnect.
No, that's not, that's no discussion here.
I'm relieved at that.
No, not at all.
It's been mixed from the conversations. I mean, it just confused me, but I, and I also don't like the gatekeeper terminology, but I know what you mean. I know there needs to be one stop for anybody coming in that can direct. And that should be the Economic Development Department.
Yes.
But if we expect that of them, then we aren't manned for what we expect of the Economic Development Departments, from what I see now.
That's right.
I know we have some of it in the past, but. I know we have some of it in the past, but right now, we need to take a, a look at that and what we expect of them. But there's going to be, things aren't going to be easy because of who owns it, how it was funded, where it is. So I don't know whether it's going to be a simple answer.
It won't be.
It never.
We've started the conversation.
We're about, we're about just two, three days.
Yeah. I guess in 2017, one of our four big things was our zoning code, blow it up and create a whole new zoning code. So looking at these development categories, I guess we would need to determine where our biggest growth for our vision would be aligned. And if, if some of those zoning categories were not aligned with what would provide us more opportunity to bring in a developer or to create, like Elizabeth said, and Moody, that we would need more residential to, to bring it on to more tax rolls, or, you know, we know we had 96,000 plus, give or take, citizens in our city. When we get to that threshold of getting 100,000, we are able to get more funding from the Virginia General Assembly. So, you know, maybe we could, I don't know how we do it, I don't even know if it's a possibility with the zoning, or maybe rezone something that would be better fitted for our purpose, that would push our vision forward more to our advantage.
Let me see if I can bring some clarity to what I've heard so far. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Well, I'm listening to this conversation, I'm hearing words like gatekeeper, and I'm wondering if, if the departments and the boards and commissions were more aligned, if instead of having a gatekeeper, you have no wrong door. Because you don't know where people are going to first interface with the city. And if there's no wrong door, then that person gets to where, that person or that corporation or whatever gets to where they need to be. It's just a thought.
Well, let me clarify, the gatekeeper term was really, in other words, director of economic development is the lead in terms of.
First line of defense.
Economic development initiatives.
Initiatives, right.
Economic development initiatives, the director of development is the lead. And to speak to you, Councilman, and I've been saying this for a couple of years, there is more staffing needed in the Department of Economic Development to carry out the city's vision.
Yes.
So I just, you know, wanted to also clarify and go on record and say that's something.
And as a commissioner, that's a great advocacy position for you with us.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't know that the, you know, we're going to get rid of this gatekeeper language because that's, that's, now, I'm not sure it's accurate and it's making people uncomfortable. It's more of a, kind of a central point of contact, and I'm not sure that that is different than no wrong door. I mean, if the idea is that the central point of contact is the Department of Economic Development, and then that is the door, and from that point on, you know.
Not only that, the ultimate responsibility is there.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, as a business owner, that does not always happen.
No, of course not.
You know, and, and, and we need to fix that.
Right. So we seem to have, we're going to test this, we seem to have general agreement that the city, specifically Department of Economic Development, is the central point of contact, takes the lead, is the, you know, the, the coordinating entity. And, and so we're all pretty good with that. We're also pretty good, I think, with the idea, now that we've kind of clarified that, that the next, that some of the next steps would be, you know, let's get a list of available properties with, you know, kind of a structured criteria to them, and look through them because some of those are going to be easy to say, this is economic development, this is institutional development, this is, you know, and then you can see where the outliers are. And then the third thing, kind of concurrent with all this, is to do this inventory of the tools and the capacities of the EDA, PHR, PRHA, and PPIC.
There's GPDC too.
Now weigh in again, please.
Of course. And, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Whitaker, who's squirming in his seat, he's been quiet. So I want to, before you unsquirm, I want to.
The clock has about 30 more minutes.
No, you go ahead, you go ahead.
He has about 55 seconds, Doc.
You've been quiet, Dr. Whitaker, so I want to make sure, what do you, are you?
No, I'm just saying I have 30 more minutes left, that's why I'm squirming.
I understand that.
When you talk about developing the inventory database, I mean, that's in-house, available through the city, but you sort of have to go two prongs. Developing what your inventory is, identifying it, but you have to develop who our prospects are going to be. There are prospects that will come out of the PPIC, there are prospects that will come out of PRHA, there are prospects that will come out of the military, there are prospects, obviously, that are going to come out of Department of Economic Development. That's the most critical piece, to develop who are the prospects. Prospects will come out of the port. Those are the pieces of the puzzle to get the city where we need to go.
And, and to make sure, I think, just to add that, that as part of this identification of prospects is, is the other part of this is to make, just the conversation here is where these things land, so that you don't have three different entities going after the same prospect. You've got to coordinate it.
You know, some of these things are, you know, obviously we've got to work out on the land responsibility and ownership, but in the short term, I know council has a liaison to the Housing Authority. So we somewhat stay connected thanks to our liaison, but who's the liaison from EDA to the Housing Authority? Or who's the liaison from the Housing Authority to EDA? I, I think in the short term, we, we, we need to look at having mutual liaisons.
We do.
So, and I know, I'm not talking about staff members necessarily, I'm talking about other board members.
Oh, we're talking about that, yeah.
And I, I think that would.
We did, we did identify that.
As of lately, we just started it.
That was an item that we discussed at our retreat.
We did, okay, okay.
Was a establishing a liaison, the, the timing of the PRHA meeting typically the chairman makes, but their time, right as I'm getting off work. So we did discuss that and we're having continued discussions on who actually sit there. Hopefully we'll bring it back at the March meeting to determine who that's going to be.
They have been representative in our meetings as well.
And there have been people at our meetings.
But it's usually staff. Recognizing everybody's time, and Dr. Whitaker said a half an hour, Bill said he had to leave at 1:00. Can you fudge that just a bit?
Yeah.
Can we, can we get focused so that we might conclude early, about 1:30?
We may be about 1:15.
Hey, no, I'm making.
I only have one other thing.
Yeah, I think, no, I think we've got great progress if we're all agreed about the point of contact. And then, you know, we've got a, what we're going to do in the short term with these new projects. I think that we want to talk about you all, we want to talk about developing this strategy screen for future prospects, because you've got the point of contact now, so that's good. But then you've got to have something to, you know, the kind of a, what does this, does this mean? You know, let me do, Mr. Hines, and Ms. Simmons, I'll come back to you.
I think this all comes back to being a disciplined organization. I think we've talked about, you know, the tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. I think we, when we look at opportunities, we don't just look at them just because, oh, it's on High Street, oh, it's this. I think we have to look and see if it fits into a tier. If it doesn't fit into a tier, we're not interested. I think that is, I think that's the discipline we need to have going forward, instead of just saying, oh, well, this might work, you know, years down the line, we need to start with the end in mind. And I think that's, you know, where, I think that's what we need, ultimately need to go.
Well, there's a big piece that we lost today, or hadn't talked about, and that's retention and.
Yes, it's important, retention.
And migration too. When I say migration, I'm talking about job migration from a low-paying job to a higher-paying job. Existing jobs. And so I think we need to be mindful too, that there may be a day when we say, oh my gosh, they're closing. Oh my gosh, they're laying off.
Right.
Oh my gosh, they're, they're cutting out living wage jobs. So somehow we need to make sure that we don't lose that.
Our mayor, oh my God, they've just hired 60 people to put those cranes out at the port, you know. But my question, the question I asked when I heard that we have 60 people, I asked how many of those were from Portsmouth? And then there was, there is that silent pause.
Ms. Simmons, I had not forgotten you, you were going to say something, but you've now, I'm sorry.
I tend to splurge out when I think of things. I'm just sitting here looking around the room thinking, everybody in this room is here because we are passionate and we care about economic development. However, there are only two people in this room that are paid every day to work on economic development. And that's Mr. Moore and Dr. Patton. That's it. Everybody else is just a supporting character. And I think sometimes even, you know, the mayor and, and the chairman of EDA, we all have to remember, we are supporting characters.
Supporting characters.
For these two. That is their job, every day.
Every day. Good point. Yes?
I actually want to address Dr. Patton because my business is specifically designed to create not necessarily high-paying jobs, but certainly living wage jobs here in Portsmouth. And I think that some of that goes back to the focus on the sustaining and developing of small business in the community. I have 46 employees in three and a half years, 78% of them are from Portsmouth. Those are the numbers that we want to see. And I'm just a drop in the bucket when it comes to small business. When we were riding on our retreat, we rode down High Street and I counted 19 small businesses in a row, small locally owned businesses. We're the ones driving and creating job opportunity within our communities. And we have a loyalty that you can't buy or negotiate. And, and so, so I think, and I, I hope that you all agree with me, that, that some attention needs to be really given to the small business community at large, and getting them to not only stay here, but to continue to create new and innovative ideas that create those higher-paying jobs that we're looking to keep in the city.
Let's use our last bit of time and talk a little bit about land banking as a strategy for moving this forward, Don.
Before you go to that, we've just passed over the whole institutional development. I'm just going to throw this as a caveat, we're sitting on the best institutional development opportunity in the city of Portsmouth. Every time I look out this window, I'm just thinking, man, we're sitting on the best property in the city, and I'm hopeful that some, soon, somebody will have the vision and idea to come up with a plan on what we're going to do with this land that we're sitting on here in the jail and the court, old courthouse. We have a long-range plan on that, so hopefully.
Part of the, it's one of the big four.
It's already started.
That's all the gateway.
And let me just, before we move to land banking, let me just test this assumption really quickly for the, you know, is, is that as we get this list of the, and, you know, this integrated list of properties, there's almost a kind of a pass fail. If it's economic development, it's EDA. If it's institutional development, it's EDA. You know, if it's residential development, by and large, it's the Housing Authority, although some of that might be someplace different, and you can tease out those outliers. So that's kind of the first cut of that. And so we want to talk a little bit about Mr. Ashby's issue.
No, no, no. And when we say land banking, we, we've already started that discussion.
Right.
When we discuss land banking, we're talking about opportunities where land.
Is available.
Is available, should be acquired, or even the discussion about the properties that are held by other entities. How do we move that through this process? For instance, comes in by whatever means, is identified as a best use to whomever, and who holds, and who does it go to, and who develops and moves it forward. So you all started that discussion right where we made that initial transition. But what you're doing now is sort of that second level. When, when we have it, when we have the opportunity, when we can get our hands on it, what do we move the next piece to?
Can I just interject one thing that we didn't touch on, and we need to touch on this strategically, and that's air rights. We have a lot of air rights on this waterfront, and there are a lot of different ways that we can approach relocating employees in terms of our air rights. That is a valuable, valuable collateral for the city.
Just got it on the parking lot.
Air rights.
Air rights.
All right.
Air rights all up and down this waterfront, including City Hall.
And the building over there.
Yes, air rights.
So land banking, you know, we, Robert, is there anything you want to say about this?
No, I think we summed it up. I think in interest of time.
We're finished.
I got to stand up.
Yeah, we've, we've pretty finished.
In interest of time for everyone, I think, the discussion has been great, and so we, we feel like the land banking has already been kind of discussed as we've had these discussions, so.
My work here is done. But, all right, let's just, let's just recap this. We, and I've said this before, we're going to reiterate, thank you, Deborah. You know, that the, the city Department of Economic Development takes the lead, is the point of contact. And that, and, and that gets widely publicized and disseminated so that everybody knows that. So it's kind of the, it's the no wrong door because there, this is the door. And, and then the department is responsible for making sure that there's, everything else is invisible, that there's no wrong door in terms of where it goes. Short term, we've got, we've got two concurrent tracks here. What we do now with the, what the properties we have now, get the list of available properties, it's an integrated list with the same kinds of criteria, we kind of figure out where they fall in terms of, you know, what makes sense in terms of entity ownership, for lack of a better word. And then who can do what? Let's take a, a similar inventory about who's got the capacity, the tools to do the best job with these. Out of that will probably come, you know, some kind of a list of prospects, which then can be discussed in a coordinated way, so folks aren't tripping over one another. And, and then a continued follow-up about developing these cross liaisons that you all have already, the EDA has already begun to, to work on, identified in their retreat. In terms of future opportunities, we want to look for opportunities to, there may be opportunities to land bank, which is combine those properties. And that might come out, it might be like kind of these prospects that come out, it might be evident as you go through these lists, the inventories of properties. Land bank, again, the idea of let's get these properties from languishing and back on to the active tax rolls in the most effective and efficient way possible. And some of that is going to be the return on investment, the cost benefit analysis, are there encumbrances, all of that. The development of this strategy screen, for lack of a better word, that, that begins to say that, one, it's got to fit into a tier, or we're not interested. You know, two, we want to address, you know, make sure we're looking at retention migration. You know, that we want to make sure we're supporting small businesses, and, and then again, how to move through this process. So that would be what we're going to do now, and what we'll do in the future. We've got some kind of short-term things to do, but the major short-term thing you've already done, which is clarify this point of contact, central point of contact, and then clarify the need to, let's get a, an integrated comprehensive list, everything's out there, and begin to take a logical first step at where, where they should land. Is that good, fair? We did that all right?
Thumbs up.
Yes. Everybody, good, thumbs up? Any discrimination, any questions, anything that, you know, we need to cover before we break?
All right, do we have, I mean.
Consensus?
Consensus.
Consensus, yes.
Everybody's had a chance to discuss, everybody understands, everybody publicly supports it.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council and our EDA commission, as we do every week, although this has been from 10, from 9:00 this morning up until about 1:00, we will have someone that will go through the complete video documenting every piece, question, or assignment that is given. We'll task our team, address each of those assignments, and get back to both the EDA and the council with those pertaining to the meeting here today. And some will come back and report backs, others to the EDA will come back with Mr. Moore making presentations on those parts. But I'd like to thank all of you all for taking a full Saturday to come and participate in this meeting. I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Well, I, I too thank everybody for taking time from their, their weekend and the Saturday. And I, I thank you for your candor and your frankness, and for the questions, and the spirit of cooperation and teamwork. Any other comments? Well, if there are none. Well, if there are none, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting and EDA.
And move for adjournment.